Nineteen meeting of the SBCC Board of Trustees. I'll note for the record that all members of the board are in attendance with Daniel Wallace sitting in for student trustee Kenny Abeschi. Welcome, Daniel.
Thank you.
We'll all now, for those who wish to participate, stand to say the pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start with our public comments for the evening, we have a special public comment that we're going to hear from Rocco Constantino, who has some great news for us.
Thank you, President Miller, and hello to the board and everybody in attendance. We're lucky today to have an alumni here with us who just had a very special accomplishment. Mitch Wisnowski was a member of our football team, played here for SBCC, did great here. And when he left SBCC, he went on to the University of Utah with the dreams of maybe one day playing in the National Football League. This past week, he was drafted in the fourth round by the San Francisco 49ers. And, you know, has a great story to tell. And without any further ado, I'd like to call up Mitch Wisnowski, who'd like to address the board quickly.
Thanks for having me here today. Just wanted to sort of briefly tell my story. So I'm from Australia. I was silly enough to drop out of high school at one point and sort of chase money. And then one day sort of found out about, you know, opportunities in America to go to college and play football and stuff like that. So I looked into that and I was told that, because I dropped out of high school, college isn't really an option for me, and that there was a time sort of in my car when I was told, like, my grades and everything was looked through. And I was told that college wasn't an option. And, you know, I'd almost had to sort of give away that dream. And then I found out junior college is an option. So I had to get my GED in Australia, and then I moved to Santa Barbara. So the first time I ever actually played football was in 2014, here at Santa Barbara. The coaches were great. I soon was given a scholarship to the University of Utah. But, yes, Santa Barbara prepared me, the coaches, Coach Moropolis, prepared me for exactly what was coming at Utah. Sort of, it was instilled in me early here that, like, the work ethic needed to succeed and stuff like that. So, yeah, I went to Utah, had three successful years at Utah. And then, yeah, last Saturday, the 27th, I was, yeah, called by the 49ers and drafted early in the fourth round, which is way earlier than I ever thought was possible and exceeded all my dreams. So, yeah.
Congratulations.
We're, everybody here and everybody at the college is really proud of your accomplishment. And we wish you the very best at the 49ers. I know it's, getting drafted is a huge deal, but then actually getting on the field and sticking with it will be another great challenge in your life. Just don't be too tough on my Minnesota Vikings. Okay, for additional comment tonight, we have Denise Adams.
Thank you for serving. I just wanted to share with them, there's a bus that goes up from here of season ticket holders to the 49er game. So when all of you want to go, you don't have to drive yourself, you can go on the bus. So, anyway, thank you for your service. I did want to make public comments on three separate topics. One, I did attend your equity meeting last night. I wanted to make sure you were aware it was on racial equity. It was very poorly attended. You had it in the Garvin Theater, which holds over 400. I would guess that there were less than 40 people in attendance. There's something wrong with marketing when it's a hot topic, and I would have liked to see a full audience. They had tamales outside, they were very welcoming, the people who put it on. And the speaker and I had been in communication for six weeks prior to his arrival. He had referred me to Culver City School District, to San Diego, to look at achievement gap issues, how to repair them. He came well-prepared, greatly disappointed with the turnout. And so I don't know how you solve that internally, but as a member of this community, if we invite a guest, I hope we promote it. And I did look at local newspapers, it was nowhere to be seen. So the jux of his topic that I got out of it, in addition to other things, we all are in our lot in life, and that part of what education's about is capturing each individual student's aspirations and mentoring them. Too often, we don't know who our students are, and we're not successfully mentoring them, or finding what turns each individual on, so that they become lifelong learners, inspired, passionate, motivated. And I thought he did a great speech. We can all watch it on YouTube. I was thrilled. I said to Louz this morning at the gym, here he was, already on YouTube, very fast turnaround, impressed with your department. I also wanted to let you know, at the last meeting, you took up housing after there was public comment and your demographic study. As you know, we have asked in the past for a comprehensive demographic study of all students, whether they're from the district, outside of the district, where they come from, their age, what their attainment is, what their needs are beyond housing. We also want to talk and find out from you what the programs are that are successful, not successful, what the costs are. Last night, while waiting for the speaker, we had people from your institutional research department there, so I was able to engage them. All of this information's available. And I think going back to, I think it was in September, when trustee Croninger requested the information, it would be very helpful to get. It is available, and I did get to speak to your internal investigations, statistical department people, and they said they could collect that for you. And we would like to have what you have available, update it, and then ask you as a community if you would get a consultant and really get down to who we serve, how much it costs, and what we can do better. The other thing I wanted to mention to you, that my complaint statuses, the status of complaints I filed in February have not been responded to. I've raised this issue before. You have a board policy, you have administrative procedures. They say you have 10 days to respond to me. It's been over 120. I've raised in the past that, in my opinion, your legal counsel is conflicted. I wanted to find out, and I've asked, when you all took a vote, that you were willing to be represented by conflicted attorneys? I've also told you that if we don't get a response, unfortunately, we're going to have to be the people who sue. So we would like to have you look at the status of the complaints. I know that one complaint was addressed at your faculty senate last week. It didn't go over very well. We're very concerned with how people from the public are treated, when they come. If, in fact, complaints are filed, it's ironic to us as members of the public that the new president of your faculty senate is under investigation. She accused me, she accused others, you know, the white old women, the racist, not very popular. And she assaulted one of your former faculty members as well. If, in fact, you have a faculty senate person who's elected president, who's under investigation, we want you to know it's, when our investigation's completed, if, in fact, it ever gets completed, because it went to your conflicted attorneys, then we'll have to proceed accordingly. But that's an issue that you, as a board, I'm very disappointed that no one's taken that up. But the status of our complaints, the fact that the faculty, 61 of 244 faculty voted, I have it on good knowledge that many of your faculty chose not to vote because they didn't know how the votes would be counted, or if, in fact, they would be given reprisals for how they voted, so they did not vote. So on that note, I want to thank you for listening to me. I know my time's up, and please take those under consideration. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Rhonda Huesgen.
Again, I'm Rhonda Huesgen, thank you. I would like to provide you an account of a conversation that happened yesterday between trustee Justin Abboud and Tom Cole. Justin Abboud approached a small group that I was a member of, and we were having, outside of the Garvin Theater, we were having a protest of the Just Communities Central Coast at the City College. And I recognized him, and I introduced him to the group that I was with. And for, this is for the public record, and it's crucial that you all know what transpired at that time. I was with Tom Cole and other gentlemen, and myself, there were more of us, but we were in the conversation with Justin, or Jonathan, excuse me. Tom memorialized his conversation, and again, I said I was a witness as well, and I verified that this is what the conversation was about. Jonathan Abboud said, "I want to educate white people how they have slaughtered the Indians and enslaved the blacks. They brought the slaves here and must be punished for this travesty." Cole said, "It was Muslims and Africans that sold slaves to the Rothschild slave boats." Abboud said, "That's not true. You whites need to know how bad you are. I love Just Communities, they are the truth. I came to America after 9/11, and I was discriminated against." Cole said, "And now you want to discriminate against whites?" Abboud said, "I'd love to educate you all about how bad you are. You whites are the enemy of America. I have to go now." Later that evening, I was looking at Facebook, and I saw the post made by trustee Abboud, which goes as follows. Attending a lecture at SBCC about the role of community colleges in addressing racial inequity, run into some white supremists outside protesting, who claim that racism, and sexism, and classism, homophobia doesn't exist, and teaching about racism is discriminatory to white people. Tried to teach them about systemic racism and got met with, and these are in quotes, "I don't see race, I get discriminated against for being white all the time, I played sports and was popular in school, people hated on us for being popular, that's prejudice." End of quotes. Abboud continued writing, "No need spending any energy trying to teach at this point, just need to continue working to make them politically irrelevant." And I, as I said, I was there. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lanny Eberstein. Ebenstein, sorry about that.
Members of the board, Dr. Benjamin. My name is Lanny Ebenstein. I, the past several weeks, have sent to several members of the board, as well as to the administration, thoughts on the enrollment of Santa Barbara City College. And I'm actually working on another memo with respect to that, but I wanted to come to the board meeting and express some of those thoughts. Santa Barbara City College is in a major declining enrollment mode at this point in time. In the fall of 2014, there were slightly more than 20,000 students at Santa Barbara City College. In the fall of 2018, that's the fifth school year later, four years later, but the fifth school year later, there were slightly less than 15,000 students at Santa Barbara City College. That's almost a one-quarter reduction, or slightly more than one-quarter reduction, in five years. That is really significant. And what makes it even more significant is that it was not a statewide trend across the state. In fact, leaving out Santa Barbara City College, there was a slight increase in enrollment across California community colleges between September 2014 and September 2018. But the point is, is that the numbers were about balanced across the statewide system at the same time that the Santa Barbara City College enrollment was down about one quarter. What was also really significant is that just between September 2017 and September 2018, enrollment was down almost 1,800 students, just in that one most recent year, one most recent academic year, from fall to fall. And really significantly, of the, where did this decline fall? The California Community College President's Office, which is the source for these data, disaggregates enrollment on the basis of age. And of the 1,800 student decline, about 1,400 were of students who were 19 and younger. That's really significant, because it says that the enrollment decline at the current time isn't sort of a general decline in the Santa Barbara area, but that it's specifically, predominantly, about three-quarters of students who are under age 19. And although it's only anecdotal, my feeling is that there are really two factors at work. One is that many other community college districts across California are instituting programs similar to the PROMIS program, whereby if students remain in their local community college, they'll get free tuition, they'll get free books, everybody has a slightly different program. But nonetheless, there's a real financial advantage to stay local. And I think that's a good thing, and I think it's important to encourage as many students to attend community college as possible. But what I think it's doing is, is that it's resulting in fewer community college students from elsewhere in the state coming to Santa Barbara. And then again, there's the continuing problem of rent, in terms of the high cost of rent is undoubtedly reducing the number of students here. What I would say, too, is that when it's primarily younger students who are not attending City College, those students tend to take the most number of courses, so that the actual number of courses that are being lost is probably, or the number of full-time enrollment students being lost is probably greater than just the numbers indicate. So what's the upshot? For this coming year, the, based on the data that was presented at the recent, I believe it was the April 11th board meeting, was projecting only a 1% further decline in enrollment in this coming year, which would be about 14,900 students this September. I think it's more likely that'll be 13,600 students. We'll know in a few months, but I think that statistic is probably off by about 1,300 students. It may be somewhere in between, but I would be very surprised if there were 14,900 students here this September. Similarly, with respect to courses, although the projection is somewhat more, as far as the number of courses that would be declining from that of course enrollment, 5%, I think it's probably more likely to be in the vicinity of 15%. This will have really significant impact on the budget, and it's something that, as I said, as someone who's watched enrollment trends for many years in our area, it's something that I wanted to express to in our public comment, that this is a really significant decline in enrollment. It's something that'll need to be watched very closely to see how enrollment comes in this September.
Thank you very much for sharing that information. Those are all the general public comments we have this evening. The next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes for our last several meetings. And we'll entertain a motion for approval of the minutes for February 28, March 14, March 28, April 25, and the special meeting of April 3, 2019.
I move to approve minutes of the regular meetings of February 28, March 14, 28, April 25, and the minutes of the special meeting of April 3, 2019.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item five, development of the consent agenda, which encompasses items 6.1, 7.1, and 7.2. We have a public comment on item 6.1, so I'll call the commenter Denise Adams.
Thank you again, Denise Adams. I wanted to speak on item number 6.1, on financial literacy, about your revising and looking at your website, so that students who come to college understand somewhat about financial aid and debt. I wanted to share with you that Santa Barbara was one of the leaders in teaching financial literacy through the Boys and Girls Club and Girls Inc. The attendance was so phenomenal from students, we have a 65%, I think, poverty level here, students on breakfast, lunch programs, many homeless. We were featured in the New York Times for being the Santa Barbara Junior High School for having homeless kids with billionaires, and how we all got along, or how it worked out. And it came down to financial literacy. Many students don't know even what money is, let alone a savings account or a checking account, so it's wonderful that you want to have, use some of your grant money to work on a website. But I think that part of the problem is, in society, we teach them economics when they don't even know what a savings account is, or what cash is. They've never seen a bill in their life because they live in Section 8 housing, which I used to develop, I understand that very well. Our programs here were so popular, we took them down to the Staples Center. Over 2,000 inner-city youth came to learn financial literacy, because they didn't know how it worked. That problem, program went on because banks became our sponsors. And I applaud Ben Carson, our new Secretary of HUD, because he's instituting a lot of these financial literacy projects, programs in the projects, and it's something that needs to occur. But to have a website where you teach people about financial aid, and then these kids come out, I see them on TV all the time, "Oh, I'm $100,000 in debt, I'm 150, I'm 60," whatever, they're in debt, because they don't really understand money. So I would hope that, along with this, you could incorporate something through dual enrollment, or something at the high school level coming in, because now that we have the PROMIS program, where they get it free, kids, it's just one more, one more area where they're not going to understand money. And I think it's a huge disservice to our society when students do not understand money. So if you could do something, our secondary classes, we taught students about the stock market, how to invest. I went through school, I went through graduate school, I was clueless how to do the stock market. I had to take those courses, like Options Express and Invest Tools, that they would offer to understand the stock market. Again, some of these kids in the inner city, they got up at 2:00 in the morning, they took multiple buses to get to Staples Center, because kids want to learn, they want to understand money, they don't want to be drug dealers, they don't want to have to work with their pimps, they want to know how to succeed. They can be bookkeepers, accountants, they can be, you know, inventors, but they have to know how the system works, they have to know how to access capital. And as the speaker said last night, that's a big form in racial inequity. There's no doubt that we have a systemic structural issue here of how the outcomes are. But we have to give everybody the opportunity to learn, and I think financial literacy goes beyond your website, so I'm glad you got, congratulations, I'm glad you got a grant from the state. Hopefully, you can look at some expanded programs, and also take them down to high school. Thank you.
Thank you. So with respect to the consent agenda for the three items, I believe I have them all identified, 6.1, 7.1, and 7.2. Are there any, does any board member wish to remove any of those items from the consent agenda? Trustee Croninger.
7.1 and 7.2 I have, I would like to talk about.
So that leaves us with, with item 6.1. So I guess it'll be a simple motion on whether to approve item 6.1, or, if I hear a motion? Is there a second? We have a, the motion and a second, is there any discussion?
No, I just, I wanted to comment that we, or at least I know, a lot of us have, but I think I specifically, we've talked to Jeff Green about the PROMIS and the financial literacy. I think when the PROMIS started, we, Peter, if you recall, I mean, it was, we wanted to really convey to the community that this wasn't free, this was an investment in our community. And nothing is free, it costs someone money, this is our donors, this is our, whatever the venue of the resources coming in. So I know that the foundation, that is something that we have talked about, I know at the League conference, and I think I brought the book before, it was John Hope Bryant, he does talk about that, I think he named it Silver Rights, in that financial literacy piece, that is really important for our communities. And kids growing up in households where, I mean, if you're living paycheck to paycheck, and the multiple-earner strategy is the strategy by which your family is making a way, and you're working since you're 15 and 16, to help, saving is not something that you're taught, you're taught to survive. And I know that, because I've been working since I was 15. So I do want to, I mean, I hope that we do follow up, and I think that any time we educate our campus community, this is a great step. But as far as the comments that made, I think that we should continue and follow up with the foundation, because our students and everybody, we do need to have, how to be good stewards of what we're provided for, so.
Trustee Parker.
Yeah, and just adding on to that, in terms of the comments, I think that the public comment paragraph was a little bit misleading, because it says it's a grant to work on financial literacy awareness, when it's really a financial aid literacy awareness, which makes, which is a little bit clearer when you look at the actual proposal. And I just want to give a shout out, if we're talking about financial literacy, to Finance 100, right here at SBCC, personal finance, a lot of the things that people have been talking about are taught exactly in that course, and it's a fantastic resource for both our dual enrollment students and for our City College students. So I would really suggest that we promote Finance 100.
And when I read the, read the document attached to this item concerning financial literacy, literacy, financial assistance, it did make me think about how complicated seeking financial aid for college can be. The rules are changing all the time, and having gone through the whole process with my, with my son only a few years ago, I know how, how difficult it can be to understand what- what is available and how you apply for it and, and how to do it. So I was impressed by the, what's, what's being proposed in terms of beefing our website up and making information more readily available.
And at least, I mean, at least when I was a student here and when I worked here and my connection with the college, our financial aid department has always been very clear in the advising so that when a student goes and gets a loan, I know myself, and may she rest in peace, Ms. Cuellar, but I remember when I went to talk to her and I was like, yeah, give me that, I wanted the ten thousand or whatever, and she was like, yeah, pretty sure you're not going to get that. And she really did the math, and so she's like, well, how much are you going to make when you graduate from college? And so when she calculated that for me, and I was like, yeah, you're right, I'm pretty sure I'm not going to be able to afford that, and my current car payment and my health insurance and all of that stuff. So I do think, and from what I've known from our financial aid department, students don't just sign a promissory note, they really walk them through. And, I mean, you can tell us any different, but that's my understanding of how our college runs, is they really do a good job helping folks to understand what they're getting themselves into.
Trustee Wallace.
Thank you. One of the things that I learned when student government attended General Assembly was that one of the biggest factors for students getting the financial support they need is just that they aren't always aware of everything that's available to them. And what I see this as is a really good idea to give them the most and most up-to-date information that can be provided for them for financial aid. So I think it's a very good idea, and especially trying to organize the information in a way that's more student-friendly.
And responding to Trustee Garrett's comments about providing candid comments to students about, I'm not sure you really want to take out that law, because we increasingly hear stories about students who have gone to community colleges and they go on to four-year school and they go on maybe get a master's degree or some other advanced degree, and they end up with unbelievable debt that, that may not be justified for the, or may not be compatible with the, the area or profession they've chosen to, to enter. So I'm glad to hear your, your anecdotal comments about what happens here. Any other comments? I believe we have a motion and a second to pass. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes and welcome to the little bird we just had fly in here. Saw a bird hopping along the floor there. Okay. As to items, I guess we'll move on to item seven point one. Maybe Trustee Croninger, you could tell us your concerns about seven one and seven two, maybe they go together.
Actually, they're pretty different. The seven, seven one is a single-page fee-structured document, and my concern is that's not the contract. It's a big number, it's over two hundred and fifty thousand. And normally, we would have some sort of statement, at least in the introductory description on the agenda, that a contract of this size had been reviewed and approved by legal counsel so that we're comfortable that the kinds of issues that come up, like can you terminate the contract when your funding source disappears unexpectedly and things like that, are accounted for. So my concern is, is simply that I don't know what the contract says that we're being asked to approve, and it, I would assume, has not yet been looked at.
And how about seven point two?
Seven point two is quite different. It very obviously hasn't been looked at by legal counsel. It appears to be a contract that was drafted only by the person that we're proposing to hire and has a great many problems. It's, you know, I mean, I could list multiple problems. They are employing clerical people who are not apparently working for them, who are not covered by the confidentiality provisions. They switch back and forth. Sometimes they talk about the college, sometimes they talk about university, which is not a defined factor, including in the indemnification, they're indemnifying somebody else. The indemnities are not reciprocal, they are to the advantage of the contractor. They dis, they are being hired to review our Clery Act procedures and processes to make sure that we're doing that correctly, but they disclaim the, the idea that maybe they know what those are in the contract. They say they change from time to time and we may not know about it, basically. So that is pretty troubling. And there's, oh, we, it, it. It talks about grade adjustments and student records for grade adjustments, student performance records, which seems not relevant to what we're talking about here. It talks about, it says that the contract will be governed by and construed in accordance with the laws of Delaware, which is something we never agreed to. So frankly, this contract is so, it's so lacking in detail attention that for me, it raised concerns as to whether this was the right contractor to ask us, to ask for the kind of information we're hiring them for.
I guess if neither, if neither of these, approval of these contracts are time-sensitive, I would suggest that we have legal counsel review them and, and take this up again at our next meeting.
I agree, I think that's correct. Thanks for your eagle legal eye, Ms. Croninger, Trustee Croninger. And the first one is an oversight on our part, contract's not there, it should be. And in the second, we'll make sure that legal takes a look at it, and these will be back again for the third time next month.
Okay. Well, I apologize for being.
No, there's no need to apologize. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay.
Any other comments on seven one and seven two? We'll now move to item eight point one, the Chancellor's Vision for Student Success Goal Alignment. And it looks like Vice President Ralston will be presenting.
Thank you, President Miller, members of the Board of Trustees, Superintendent Benjamin. I'm very lucky to have an incredible team of people here to present tonight because, as you might notice, I may not be quite all the way ready to soldier through quite a lengthy presentation. But today, we're going to hear about Santa Barbara City College's response to the Chancellor's desire for a vision for student success.
Vice President, could I just interrupt?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I should have mentioned this ahead of time. Do you think the presentation will be more than twenty minutes? We have a scheduled interview at five o'clock, so we can, we can start and proceed, but it may be an interruption at some point.
That would be okay. Maybe I could confer with the faculty members who are working with me tonight and see if I might be able to keep Dr. Reese as the second item, and if we started with AB seven oh five and guided pathways, that might serve those folks a little better. Dr. Reese, are you okay with that? Okay, great. So we'll switch gears a little. We have been mentioning in smaller ways some of the work that we've been doing to respond to mandates and initiatives by the Chancellor's Office, and tonight we have two stellar.
Dr. Ralston, sorry, do you want to just note, just, sorry, President Miller, that we are now moving to eight point two and not talking about eight point one, just so it's clear in the order of what we're doing?
Thank you for that clarification.
Just so that it's like.
That's, that's great, thank you. So I have Dr. Anita Cruz here today to talk about our response to AB seven oh five. She's been leading a team of faculty and staff in working on our response for placement and assessment strategy changes following recent legislation. And then I'll have her go, and then later I'll introduce Dr. Prothero. Thank you. Item eight point two.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Anita Cruz, and it's my honor to very briefly share an update on the SBCC compliance with Assembly Bill seven zero five, which was signed into law in October of 2017. Very early on in our compliance work, it became clear that we needed a structure that brought together leadership and representation from the four departments most directly affected by the new legislation. And this structure began with a leadership team from English, Math, Credit ESL, and Assessment. Oh, me. I'm like, come on, okay, and there we are. All right. You told me clicker, I even practiced, okay. And this is our leadership team. Furthermore, then, we knew that the former Assessment Committee needed to be reimagined to provide input and direction from faculty, academic counseling, and other crucial student service areas of the college. And we renamed that committee the Placement and Curriculum Transformation Committee, PCTC, because that is what we were going to be doing, placement and curriculum transformation. We were no longer going to be doing assessment for all students, just one population. So this name more accurately represents the work expected by the California Community College Academic Senate and Chancellor's Office. So AB seven oh five, in short, requires a college to increase the likelihood that students will enter and pass college-level English and math in one year, and that ESL students complete transfer-level English within six semesters, beginning at the point a student in a credit ESL program declares intent to transfer or obtain a degree. This is the word of the legislation. So changes, the most significant changes that have been completed for math and English compliance for fall 2019, and the revised, are that the revised placements for over thirty thousand students have happened, and this, we discontinued assessment for English and math placement. These changes, of course, necessarily result in a significant amount of work behind the scenes to communicate the changes with students, all of the technology and recoding and everything that has to happen in order to, to make this happen and then communicate and train our colleagues in how to get this information across. So re-envisioning credit ESL is a work in progress. The compliance date for credit ESL is fall 2020. The ESL work is significant and complex, and they are tasked with preparing students to transition from ESL all the way to college-level English. They have had to do much of their work initially, initial work towards compliance with delayed guidance from the Chancellor's Office. In fact, their, their most significant guidance did not come until about two weeks ago, at most. And yet, they still needed to be starting that work. Students will continue to complete assessment for ESL placement, that's a very important distinction. English and math placement is not based on assessment, but ESL placement is. And that will be for the foreseeable future. Of significant concern is the support for ESL recruitment and retention, reaching out to our community in new and continued ways. In your folder, you have the new math flow chart, and in looking at it, I'm sure that you can understand why, I'm not going to try and explain it to you, but it represents an incredible amount of work on behalf of the math faculty. It is a complex set of decisions, depending not only on high school GPA, but also high school coursework completion. And decisions for math placement are also highly dependent on degree pathways. Jamie Campbell in math has diligently led this math compliance work. In a nutshell, all students are eligible for English one-ten. All students will have the right to take English one-ten.
Which is college level.
Which is college-level English. The English Division, including English and English Skills faculty, have worked collaboratively to provide support options for students. In your folder is the new English sequence chart, and that shows the broad range of support options, including two courses below college level that students can self-select for additional practice and preparation. In addition, the concurrent support options are described in more detail on the table, another handout that you have in your folder. All support courses are optional in English. Although English and math are ready to meet the compliance deadline for AB seven oh five this fall, fall 2019, we are not, as you will hear sometimes said, post seven zero five. We are just now entering the AB seven oh five world, and our ESL colleagues will soon follow in fall 2020. We will be diligently looking at data and researching modifications that may be necessary to our plan going forward. As the math and English slides emphasize, this is the first step in a long journey, and there is much work still to be done. Our needs as we enter this new reality are significant, including the areas of professional development, tutorial services, assessment office functions, and further changes to curriculum and support. While much of our developmental education has gone away under the new law, the students who need academic development, who have developmental needs, remain. And these students are the responsibility of all of us. We need to support, the support to provide what they need, and the support to provide faculty with the professional development they need to effectively teach and learn with our students. Thank you.
Do we have any questions for the presenter?
Dr. Cruz.
Yeah, just to, I'm trying to work my head around how this actually works, because it's going to be different from what we have done in the past. So how does a student come to realize that the self-selection process going into a lower level, how do they figure that out?
So we've worked really closely with academic counseling. We've, we've met with them many times, and they have these, this, you know, table that explains the support options. They understand that when they do their student ed plans, and they are talking to students about this. But the law prevents us from recommending, and the English Division voted not to require any support options, although math does have some required support options, depending upon GPA. But with English, it's a matter of, of making students aware of this. Over this summer, Sarah Voli and I will be, she is from the Assessment Office, we're going to be creating a tool that is a, has a very long name right now that we will try to make shorter, but it is a informational tool for students. It'll be a slot, basically a document or slideshow that they can go through, and they will be able to see samples of student writing in one-ten, samples of text, sample assignments, here's student testimonials and video. Luce will be helping us to create this under the, the policies of the college so that students can go through this tool and make a decision about whether they think they're going to need some support. But the law prevents us from saying, you know, I think that you really need to take this class. We can just make them aware of the options. So it's, it's just education, and it's changing the culture of how we've been doing things.
And I just wanted to point out now, we were, this is a study session night, and we had so much we wanted to share with you. So on these two, the one you, that Dr. Cruz just finished, AB seven oh five, and the one to follow guided pathways, you're getting like a ten-minute overview. And if you want more in your study session in June, we can have a more in-depth discussion on it. But this is just to make you aware of what the laws are and how we've responded. And I have to add that it is most impressive what has. And I have to add that it is most impressive what has been done here in terms of this legislation. And it's in response to the legislation and the faculty have really done an amazing job in getting this off the ground.
I appreciate both your comments and the notion that we need to move on because we have a very long agenda. And I think it might be helpful sometime in September or October to get an assessment of how it actually worked.
Right, that's all part of it. Yes, because it's very, very different and affecting students and employees.
So we've got another five minutes to cover this, to ask questions of Dr. Cruz, but I'll start with Trustee Wallace.
Thank you. I have heard that the sections made available in the Math and English Department for courses below college level will be greatly reduced. And I wondered how the college determined, if you know, that with all of these new policies in place, the demand for those courses will be, will be that much lower. How do we know it's in the best interest of students to reduce those course sections by so much?
It was a very long process of collaborative, really collaborative effort within the English Division. And the faculty determined based on curriculum, based on how best to meet the needs of the students who still choose to have more preparation and practice. And so we chose two courses below. There might be some sections of a third one offered. We're willing to open more course, more sections of those if the ones we have fill. We don't know what it's going to look like. But we determined based on best practices and the best curriculum going forward, which ones we would offer. And that was a, it was quite a collaborative effort.
Thank you. Trustee Nielsen, did you have a question?
Yeah. Your presentation was great. It was more information than we've had so far. I saw, I used to see some details, which I'm sure you were working on. But my question is, you know, AB 705 is new to the state here, but it's not new to the country. The idea's been tried in Florida, Minneapolis, and I've spoken to some of the people that work under those, in those areas. And I don't have much knowledge to share with you about exactly how they implemented it. However, it has been implemented successfully and in other areas of the country. So I think it's great that we should do this. I was recently in a conversation with someone in Minneapolis district area, told me, who's from California and working there. She told me that she had reservations about how well it would work for us in California because there's a big difference in funding models. And I don't know what those differences are. And maybe you could, you could sarge my concerns by saying that you're intimately familiar with what Florida did or what Minneapolis did or both. And if you haven't done that, I would ask you to take a look at what they've done and how they did it because they were successful doing this.
I will look at that.
That's my concern.
It's been overwhelming just to handle the California piece.
But they were successful accomplishing the same goals. Maybe the laws were a tiny bit different. But we need to know what those differences were that, you know, what made them successful and is, are any of those key points missing in what you've been directed to do? And I think most of us at the trustee level are looking to people just like you to tell us that, no, we need this and we don't have it. So we need to know that. The sooner the better.
Yes.
Just one trustee's opinion. Thank you.
We've got a couple of minutes left. Trustee, we'll keep going. Trustee Cronin?
We had seven questions suggested by the league on this subject. I was just going to pick one. And I'm reading it because I think it indicates the way people are thinking about this, following up on Daniel's question, that there really is a very strong belief that placing students in the transfer-level classes will be better for students. So the question was, given the poor outcomes of below-transfer courses, what steps is the college taking to prevent students from underplacing themselves and to safeguard against implicit bias in who is guided into these courses?
So I can speak best on, with regards to English on that question. And that was one of the major concerns that the English Division had and the primary reason why we chose to make all support optional. There would have been an equity issue if we would have been requiring support based on high school GPA, we felt. So all support is open to all students. We have many different models. And, but all students have the right to go into English 110. We are not placing below-college level. So they all have the right to be in college level and that is the placement they've received. So there is no recommendation they've received for below-college level.
Do you have any concern? I mean, it sounds like a great idea to have them see what are examples of what they will do in the course. But I can also imagine students becoming concerned that I'm losing their confidence that they were able to do that and then self-selecting themselves down where the success rate is lower. So is there any steps we've taken to try to prevent that loss of confidence?
I would say none that I'm aware of at this time, except that we are all optimistically, cautiously optimistic and we're approaching this, that we're going to take all of those students into 110 and we're going to offer all the support we can. We also, I mean, just 110 itself changed to a four-unit, providing an extra hour of support. So it's a four-unit class now. But that is one of the things we're going to look at really closely in our research and data collection, starting from day one in the fall, so that we make sure that we look at, at who's taking up the support? How did they learn about the support? Who's not taking 110? Who's self-placing and why and how does that look? That research is going to be really important.
Okay. Thank you very much, Dr. Cruz. I know there's more questions and comments on this, but we really need a couple of minutes before our first interview starts at five.
So I don't have a question more than just to give you guys what to think about for June. And so my only comment to think about is, I really loved the last slide and I feel like that's where I would want to see a lot of the efforts. Knowing our local school district in the area of math, they are 62.4 points below the standard for our most disadvantaged students. And so just knowing that we are the pipeline for our socioeconomic disadvantaged students and many of our students of color, our local school district, just, that's a big area of opportunity. So as we look ahead to that joint board meeting and what we are looking at, our faculty are going to need a lot of support to really, and we do phenomenal work here and we transfer kids and we remediate a lot. And it doesn't look any better for ELA. Our students are 31.5 below. So that's something to think about in June and that's going to be a lot of moving parts. But I do fully support that the faculty are going to need a lot to meet the needs of these students, knowing that our local school district has had some opportunities. And I say that as a parent, having to fund my own tutoring because of lack of math curriculum in our local district.
Okay, Dr. Hasland, you have 60 seconds to introduce us to the two interviews we have coming up.
Perhaps at our last meeting, a subcommittee of the board was appointed to review any applications that came from various search groups that wish to be retained by us for the purpose of aiding us in the selection of the next superintendent president. Given that Superintendent President Benjamin has declined to stay after December, no matter how enticing we make it, I've offered various things like unending bowls of clam chowder, which I happen to know she likes. So given that that option was not mine to exercise, we looked at four applicants and selected two for review by the board. And those are going to be coming to us in about one minute. Let's see, the first one, I can't remember who is coming first.
Dr. Joan Smith. It's Community College Search Services.
Okay. Community College Search Services will be first and Joan Smith will be on the big screen.
Thank you. And ask our technician whether we're ready to go. Okay. I think we're all ready to go. Thank you.
Oh, okay. Good evening, Board of Trustees and Dr. Benjamin and whoever else is there that I can't see. I just want to let you know that Zoom worked really well this afternoon when we did our test. But that's always the way with technology. And first, I'd like to say thank you for, I apologize for Monday not being able to meet that meeting with you on Monday. It's just that my husband had a knee replacement surgery in St. Helena and I needed to be his driver. Well, good evening and I just wanted to share on behalf of CCSS that we're grateful for the opportunity to present to you tonight. And I just wanted to take a few minutes to share my background. I retired in 2017 as the chancellor of the Yosemite Community College District. And before that, I was chancellor almost eight years and before that, a little over two years as president of Columbia College. And during that time, and before that, I was in the Yosemite District about 10 years. And before that, I was part of the Ventura Community College District, which was part of the Santa Barbara region, for approximately 25 years. I started out as a counselor in the EOPS, DSPS areas. And I finished my time at the Ventura District as the executive vice president of student learning. And then I went on to be president of Columbia College. After I retired, Dr. Fran White asked me to join CCSS. And I had a lot of respect for Fran. I worked with her for years. And although I am new to the Community College Search Services, I have to tell you that I spent many years and I'm intimately involved with search processes. The YCCD Board had a seven-member board and they held me responsible and accountable for the presidents that they hired and all the executive staff and the vice chancellors in the district office. Before that, also, I served on many search committees as a participant, starting from faculty in the Ventura District. And I was on two chancellor search committees as a faculty and several after that as in my dean positions and vice president positions. One of the things that I'd like to say is, I've done one search thus far that is wrapping up at Monterey Peninsula College. And one of the things that... And one of the things that I did not do as part of the search, nor would I ever do as part of a search, is just recruit to get numbers in a pool. It's really important that -- this is one of the most important things that the Santa Barbara City College is going to do as trustees, is recruit your next CEO, your next leader. But in addition to that, it really has an impact on the whole system as a whole if people that you would hire in that position don't work out well. And I think anybody who's served as a CEO in the system would know that. I also am a little bit familiar with Santa Barbara, and I believe I met with several of you in 2015 when I led the ACCJC accrediting team to Santa Barbara. And at that time, Dr. Gaskin was the president. And that, as I recall, that was a pretty successful visitation. But anyway, moving on now with CCSS and search services, I think one of the most important things is communication and contact with the board. And at one -- some point in time across the search processes, you will tell me who you want to work with on the board or designate, or maybe all of you through board presentations. And one of the things that is critically important from the start of the initial meetings to develop the position with the board till you actually approve your CEO is going on the initial meetings and identifying the challenges and opportunities facing Santa Barbara City College over the next five to 10 years. And also, meeting with the board, whether you'd like to do that in a group meeting or individually, finding out what the board feels are the most important personal and professional characteristics that you would like to seek in your next presidential candidate or your superintendent president, rather. I reviewed your SBCC board goals for this year. And I also think that's really important to incorporate into the job announcement. Your new superintendent president or the potential candidate or all the candidates would need to know what your goals are and what the board is looking for into the future. And also, in the initial meeting, we'd like to develop and confirm the search process and a timeline. Now, it is my understanding that you're looking to fill the position sometime in the spring semester, probably in January. And if I'm wrong on that, you can let me know. And I believe you also received a proposal from CCSS, and that was kind of laid out in nine steps. And the first step was the consultation with the board and the college groups. Sometimes, schools like to do -- colleges like to do forums and get feedback from the constituency as a whole. I did that with -- I held several forums with Monterey Peninsula College and worked with the academic senate and the union leadership to just canvas the community and the community -- college community and the community at large to see what they were looking for in a superintendent president as well as the groups. So that is -- that's one of the pretty typical things to do. And then from that, with the information that you gleaned from the board, you get together and put together a position announcement. And then I'd give the position announcement to the board and then -- excuse me. And then the board would edit and give information back to me if this is the course they would like to go or not. Developing the position announcement is really a critical part of the job when you want to go out for a position, not only in the graphics and the pretty pictures, but your potential candidates really want to look at that and see what they -- what you're looking for in a candidate, what characteristics that you're looking for, what your goals are over the next five to 10 years, and what they'll be expected to do if they are a successful candidate. Then there's all the other processes. One thing right now, I'm not sure how you'd like to go about this, but when you have your search committee, do you have a -- do you have your academic senate chair that? Do you have a member from the community chair that? There's all different ways to go, and that's part of the communications process. There's also, we can assist the candidates. And I think part of this is a two-pronged process. One is not only working with the board to find out what the board wants to see in a candidate, working with the college community to see what they want to see in a candidate, marrying those two components, but also, a mentoring of the candidates as they apply for the position. The more you know about the school and the more information you get from the board, the better your position announcement will look and the better informed the candidates will be to apply. Some candidates just apply as a shotgun approach, like they're looking for a new job and they apply to five, six different positions. I know when I used to review presidential positions as a chancellor, people applying to the district, sometimes they wouldn't even put their autocorrect in on their word processing programs, and they'd say, oh, for the Yosemite District, well, it's really nice to apply for the Los Angeles District. So it's really good to work with the candidates and see what their intent is, too. One way to recruit is to solicit nominations from constituency groups, like all CEO groups, the CBOs, vice presidents of student services, vice presidents of instruction. And the other is to -- and I believe you have that in your packet. I'm assuming you all have your packets in front of you, but all the other groups and organizations that are listed, I think on page 14 or 15, that we recruit. And CCSS also has a database where we use in M-Pole candidates. I know in the last search that I did for MPC, we had at the end of the day, almost 40 candidates. It was either 38 or 39. Someone applied twice. So I got a little confused on that number, but it was a very diverse pool. And the second phase of the group was the search committee meeting and interviewing on the first level. And there were 13 candidates in that. And again, a very diverse pool. And from that group, the -- one of the trustees served as the chair of that group. And he decided he only wanted to interview two of the candidates. They, like so many, they were deciding between -- to interview five or two, and he decided to interview two. But again, the board really directs the search consultants as to what they want when they're going for a CEO position. As far as the next phase, after you get your candidates recruited, is to work with the search committee and provide an EEO training and also to get a group discussion going with the screening committee to talk to them about getting a consensus, and what is a consensus? And talk to them also about confidentiality. Applicants get very nervous if they're applying for a position and before they make the finalists, that their employer might find out about. So all these things we talk about as part of the search committee meetings. And then also, you know, as the interviews progress, is to support the chairs. It's the search consultant's job to support the chairs and the co-chairs, prepare the agendas, develop materials such as sample questions, paper screening forms. And also, to work with the committee to evaluate the candidates on the minimum qualifications. And what -- and this would be decided with the Board of Trustees in advance as to what you want your minimum qualifications to be. Some colleges want a minimum of five years in executive experience. Others are happy with three years. So it's really up to you as a board which way you'd like to go with that. And also, you know, to work with the committee and point out some red flags that they might see in applications. For example, if somebody has a sketchy work history. Or for example, if they have a nice progression of faculty, dean, vice president, president, and then all of a sudden, they're working as a dean again. And that doesn't necessarily mean that you eliminate that person, but you really want to ask them, you know, what happened or why they went from a president back to a dean position. And so those are some of the red flags that it's important to work with the committees on. The other -- and when you're working with committees and when you're working with the candidates and getting them ready to go into interviews, it's not really a time to play gotcha. It's a time to really explain to the candidates what the college is looking for, what the forums, what the campus at large had to say in the forums, and also what the trustees are looking for. The other thing that's really critical is the reference reports. And CCSS has people that just do the reference reports. They tend to be about 20 pages long. They take about two weeks to do. And they conduct extensive phone interviews with people that the candidates supply, but also people that they don't supply, like on the list and off the list that they've given as references. They also conduct a criminal and civil background check and also do a very thorough internet search, including social media. The reference reports will be delivered to the board in confidence. And any questions on those, I would be available to answer in detail. As far as campus forums, you know, when the finalists are selected, I would help facilitate those. And also, for your actual finalists, sometimes some boards like to do a site visit of the college where somebody is working at, at that time. So there's arrangements that can be made for that, like what would be useful in a campus visitation. And as far as the board's interviews, there is -- I can assist with the development of interview questions, facilitate the logistics, and also brief the finalists on the outcomes of the interviews. As far as the board interviews, I can -- you know, that's really up to you how you want to do that, how long you want to interview. Some boards like to interview for an hour and a half, some two hours. And again, that's where communication really all comes into play. One of the things that CCSS does is they will invoice for direct expenses only if a new search is required, if you're not happy with what the search results produce. They will also restart a process at any phase. They'll repeat the process if a board is not satisfied with the outcome. They'll repeat the process for direct expenses only if the board is not satisfied with superintendent president's performance in its first year. Hopefully, it would never get to that. The timelines, if you want to go over the summer and the fall, would be in June, would be a time to review the search process and best practices, identify the district challenges and opportunities, identify the leadership qualities identified by the board that you'd like to see in your new CEO. A sample timeline also would be to, in June and July, identify the leadership qualities of the internal stakeholders and community leaders. Now, this, I would have a little question on you with is because if you did your forums over the summer, I don't know how the faculty would respond to that if they were gone for the summer. So you may want to -- and I'm not familiar with your fall schedule just yet, but if you start in August, maybe you might want to back that up to August to have the full session in place before you did your campus forums. But then after that, draft the position announcement in August, collaborate with you as a Board of Trustees to finalize that position announcement, and then to begin candidate recruitment. It really takes a good seven weeks to recruit a candidate. And then after -- and then to get -- and I don't know who would do this, if all of the trustees would do this, or if one or two trustees would do this, but pick who your search committee is. And then at that time, I would work with the search committee and review the position announcement with them, develop their criteria for evaluating the applications, and go over the search timeline with them, conduct the EEO training. And in November, then we'd be able to evaluate the applications, select the candidates for first-level interviews, interview them in November, identify the finalists, and then send the finalists to the Board of Trustees, probably in early November, to introduce -- to have your interviews with the board and then to introduce them to the campus at large in a forum. And then you would select your lead candidate and negotiate a contract and then appoint them as your new superintendent president. And that's just a brief overview. And I really am not sure of the time at this point, but I'm open to any questions, and I could elaborate about anything that you would like.
Thank you very much. Maybe we could start with Trustee Parker, if she has any questions for the --
Sure. And I don't know, are we going to take turns? Should we each just ask one question and take it through? All right. So I think my first question would be, can you give me -- give us more detail on your reference checking process? What does that look like?
Okay. The reference checking process, certainly. The reference checking process is, I know several of the people who reference check for CCSS. One is a retired attorney. And a couple others that work for the -- that do the reference checks are former newspaper investigators. They call, and what's the applicant -- what the candidate is asked to do is to provide a list of references. For example, if they're a sitting president and reporting to a Board of Trustees, you know, who's on the Board of Trustees? Give us some people on there. If they're a president reporting to a chancellor, who is their direct supervisor? And then people that they supervise. And they're always asked to give a couple faculty references, a classified references, and so forth. Then after that, when those initial references are called, then the person doing the reference check will also look at the places -- look at their application and look at places where they've worked. And call people there, which is like off -- it's called off the list. And they'll just call somebody there and say, do you know Mary Smith? Did -- in what capacity did you know her? Did you find her to be active in participatory practices? Or whatever the, you know, line of question is. And then they'll just call a group of people off the list. Then, taking it a step further, they'll do detailed reference checks as far as if there's any criminal records, if they, you know, just a real robust one on that. And then also do an internet search to see, is there any negative things in the paper? Or check social media. So it turns out to be a pretty good representation of the background of the individual that would be a finalist. And they -- and the reference checks are only done on the finalists. We do not do them on all the initial candidates. And the reason being for that is a lot of people do not And the reason being for that is a lot of people do want, do not want their employer to know that they're applying for a job until they hit, until they hit the finals with final interviews with the board of trustees.
Thank you.
Trustee Aboud.
Before my question, I just wanted to commend your section on diversity in the application. I thought it was really well thought out and flashed out, so thank you for that. And so I didn't need to ask a question on it. But my question is just more subjective. What's been your favorite search and why? That you've done as a professional search consultant, not as a chancellor.
Oh, well, I, to be honest with you, I've done one so far with Monterey Peninsula College, so that's been my favorite so far. And if I get Santa Barbara, maybe you'll be my second favorite. But really, in working with Monterey, what the board of trustees asked me to do is they asked for a diverse group of applicants. They asked for someone in their, what they were looking for with their characteristics, and what they really wanted as their minimum falls, was somebody who had a really strong finance background. Now that was something that they wanted at this point in time with the college, because due to the new funding formula, Monterey Peninsula College has hit pretty hard with that. So they wanted somebody who understood that funding formula, and that was something that they felt that they had their instruction in student services really well handled, so they really wanted somebody with a strong finance background. So that's kind of been my favorite one. I also worked very closely with the trustees on that process, and one of the trustees was actually the chair of the committee. And one of the things that I saw work really well with that process is when we worked with the initial screening committee, the trustee, we spent a little time talking about consensus, and one of the things was that, you know, we talked about everybody being equal in the room, because we had a student trustee, we also had the board trustee, we had classified staff, faculty, and the vice president and deans. And it was really a good conversation for whatever anybody's impression was of the candidates. It really led to great discussions in the room, how everybody looked at it from a different perspective. And it really, it really worked well, and the group was able to reach consensus very easily.
Thank you. Trustee Haslam.
I think it's often been said that perhaps the ideal candidate is somebody who is not looking for a job. Would you, could you talk about how you might go after such a person who is not looking for a job?
Absolutely. One of the, one of the things I did with this last search, since it was a superintendent president, is to call sitting presidents and ask them to apply for the position. And tell them what the needs of the college was, tell them what the goals for the board were with respect to the new CEO. And people are flattered when you search them, I mean, number one, people are flattered when you search them out and say, you're, you know, I think you would be a good candidate. One of the things that I found helpful, in being a recent retiree, is I'm still pretty well-connected throughout the state, and I know a lot of the sitting CEOs. And I also knew what MPC was looking for in candidates, so that's, that's one of the ways to do it. The other way is, I sent out a letter to all the current CEOs and asked them to nominate somebody that they thought would be good for this position, and here's what the board was looking for, and here were the ideal characteristics and qualifications that they were looking for. And I got a lot of calls off of that letter.
Thank you. Trustee Gallardo, do you have any questions for Ms. Smith?
I have none at this time, other than writing on the reputation that they brought as Anthony, and so that's a plus to me. So assuming that they are thinking in that excellence direction, then I'm good for now.
Trustee Croninger.
Two questions. One of the short question is that we had asked in the RFP that the firm would agree not to recruit someone that they placed here for at least three years. Is that acceptable?
Yes. Again, it's, again, you know, you can share with, if we're the successful firm, I would really like to meet with the board, and I'd be happy to meet with the board individually and collectively, whatever, you know, your preferences are. But the board really directs the search. And how I see it is, this is the most important thing a board does, is hire their CEO. You direct the search, you tell me what you want, we tailor it to what you want, and then I help facilitate that.
Okay. The second question I have, we actually, I should just let you know, we actually, unfortunately, we're not happy about it, but we have been through this a couple of times and have used a similar process in recruiting before. And so we have started moving along the lines of that process, because it has worked well for us. And that means that there's a screening committee, and there is not a trustee on that screening committee, but it is co-chaired with someone inside the college and someone representing a community perspective. So we've already started asking people for, for people to be on that group.
Okay.
My question, though, is, you referenced your knowledge of folks who are in California. What are your recruiting efforts and your views of recruiting people outside of California, from other states, and even perhaps from a wider perspective than simply community college?
Well, that is something that I would talk to the board about. But for example, this last, to me, I think a national search is best, and forgive me if I neglected that, but this is a national, national search. The last pool that I recruited, there was a good number of people from across the United States, from New York, Florida, Tennessee. It's a matter, you know, an individual person, if you're a good CEO, or if you are a strong leader, California's a little different state. There's an old saying that says, you know, in community colleges, there's 49 states, and then there's the California Community College system. And there is some truth to that, there is differences, but if you're a good leader, you can adapt, and you can learn our funding formulas and all the little quirks, AB 1725 and all the little quirks of California. There is a strong national recruiting, and the list that I recruited off of last time nationally, and I've got a really good response from them, is writing CEOs across, across the United States. So as far as university recruiting from universities, you know, some boards feel like that brings a different dimension. Others just want to recruit from the community college pools. You know, some of the, and not to disclose names or too much about it, but there was, one of the finalists at Monterey is from out of state. So they really did not, the board did not have an issue with that. It's, and again, is just, a strong candidate is a strong candidate, in my opinion, and they rise to the top. And there is a national recruiting effort that CCSS does, and we have a pool that we send out to, and contact, so community colleges are across the country I recruited. And there was also someone from Stanford who applied to, into the Monterey Peninsula College. And, you know, again, it's up to you who you want to see at the end of the day as your CEO, but there's a wide net that goes out to recruit individuals for you.
Trustee Nielsen.
Well, since one of my question I had in mind was already asked, I don't think so at this time. I do kind of like, I like the idea of a national search, and, you know, even extending it outside of just community colleges, or universities for that matter. You know, there are some pretty adept people out there in other fields as well. They probably earn more money than college CEOs. Maybe they might be worth it, but we probably couldn't afford them. No, I don't have a question at this time. Thank you. Nice presentation.
Thank you.
Trustee Wallace, do you have any questions?
I do have a question. In the document that was provided to us under CCSS Recruitment Strategies Number Two, it says that, that there will be community college senior administrators contacted nationwide, and that about 1,680 senior administrators will be contacted with the titles provided. How are those senior administrators chosen? Are they just part of a certain listserv, or is there some sort of process involved?
There is a listserv, and there's a letter that goes out to the listserv, and I write a personal letter to them, and then I also, so there is, there is that way. And also, there is phone calls made to candidates who are nominated from across the, across the United States. So both ways, phone calls and letters.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. It was very good. Let me, let me ask this one final question before we sign off. We're looking to hire a new superintendent president to start in January, spring semester, which is, I understand, maybe somewhat unusual in that most searches are, most schools are looking for new, new CEOs, presidents to start in the fall semester. How much of a handicap do you think we face by looking for somebody to start in January?
I really don't think you face much of a handicap at all. It's the start of a semester. I know when I was chancellor, I recruited a new president, and she started in January. And when I was a new president, I started in January. It's just a matter of contacting people. If somebody is interested in looking for a job in, as a superintendent, president, you know, I don't see that it'll be much of a problem. The biggest thing that I think that, that we really would have to work on is at least having a seven-week recruitment time. So that's why initially establishing the timeline would be critical, because it's, by the time you make phone calls, and I do spend a lot of time on the phone, I really talk to candidates in quite depth, and I also talk to people who nominate them. It takes a lot of homework, it takes a lot of time, and it's really hard to do in less than seven weeks. But it's workable. It's totally workable.
Thank you. Any follow-up questions? Trustee Parker.
Yeah, a couple more, very brief questions, and thank you, Ms. Smith. First was on the forum. Did you run or help run a forum for Monterey?
I did. I ran three of them.
Okay. And does it make, at the community college level, do superintendents, applicants simply expect that at that point, they will lose confidentiality, and they will be part of a public process? Or does that affect the candidate pool?
No. Actually, candidates are told right up front, and let me, let me answer that in two ways. I ran a forum for them in the beginning, apart with the community members, and also the community college faculty and staff, to say, what, what do you want to see as your next superintendent president? So that was some forums. And then at the end of the forums, those are going to be held actually next week. So, yes, and I'm helping facilitate those as well. But what I tell the candidates is that once you're a finalist, that's when you need to get a bio, a picture, you know, you're going to be interviewed by the newspaper, all bets are off, and if you don't want to be announced at that time, there's no point in applying for the job.
Okay. And then my last question is, do you or does CCSS ever conduct a transition workshop with the new superintendent? Is that a separate contract that you put together, or is it part of this contract?
Yes, it is. But it also, I also know that a lot of people from CSS do mentoring and work with, do mentoring formally and informally as well. But there is a transition one, there is board training workshops that are done. I just did a board training workshop for a school in Southern California two weeks ago. So there are, there are things that you can do, and do a transition and board training with the CEO, and evaluation, how to evaluate your new chancellor, your new president, new superintendent president, things like that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time and interest.
Well, thank you, and thank you again for allowing me to do it today versus Monday. And I just will be very honest with you, this is my first Zoom presentation, so I apologize for the little glitch at the beginning, and technology is always changing on us. So thank you very much, and it was a pleasure.
Thank you. So we're going to take a five-minute recess to allow the technology to shift to our next So Dr. Fisher, you're joining us from Washington, correct?
Well, actually, no. I live in Montana. So I'm joining you from Montana where it tried to snow all day today.
Oh, my goodness. My goodness. Well, welcome.
Thank you.
As I understand it, you will give us a 15-minute presentation and then, or thereabouts, and followed by about a half hour of questions from us.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you for the invitation.
You bet.
And before we get started, I'd be remiss if I didn't say a specific thank you to two of your staff. Clyde and Warren worked earlier today with me for almost an hour to make sure the technology worked. So that's why he's so excited that it worked so well this last few minutes. And I want to acknowledge that. They were not only very professional, but very patient. And I appreciated that too.
Well, thank you for that. I've never seen a video conference that actually worked without some hitch. So I'm pleased that this is working.
So far. Well, again, thank you for the invitation. And certainly on behalf of ACCT, we are honored to spend some time with you tonight and to share a little bit about us and about what we could provide you should that be your decision. We know already what a wonderful institution you have and I know that you know that. But I still am going to acknowledge that. I also enjoyed perusing some of your website in preparation for tonight. And one of the things that particularly impressed me was the list of the boards' goals for 1819. I do a lot of work with boards on those goals and your list is way up there in the top. So I hope you're able to accomplish everything you put in that list because it's truly outstanding. So a little bit about ACCT and about myself because, of course, most of our search processes include the same basic elements. So I'd like to focus a bit on what we bring to you that we think is special. And I know you have the proposal and you also have a handout and I will sort of follow the handout, but go instead on more of the emphasis on what I think makes us a bit unique. You're a member of ACCT and of course, Association of Community College Trustees is a national member-based organization. And our purpose as an organization is to support local governing boards of community colleges. So everything we do from the legislature on has to do with helping you be as effective as possible in what you do. And one of those services is facilitating presidential and chancellor searches. And the reason I mention that is because our commitment to you is not just tonight or throughout the process, but when the process is done and your new president is there, we will continue to be there to support you in whatever ways we can. As a national organization, ACCT, of course, has a network that's national-based. We have a cadre of leaders with whom we work regularly that help us to identify prospective candidates. And we have personal relationships with both vice presidents, presidents and chancellors across the country. And that allows us to tap into that network. At the same time, we very much know California well. ACCT has done a lot of work in California. I personally am a Californian native despite the fact that I live in Montana now. That's what grandbabies will do to you, by the way. Leave sunny California for snowy Montana. But my whole career was in California. In fact, I'm a graduate of Modesto Junior College. And I spent 30 years in the Yosemite District, the last 12 as chancellor. But also while chancellor, had the opportunity for leadership roles in California and also at the national level, including chairing the AACC Board. The reason I mention that is because that has helped me personally have a network that is across the country. At this point, I've conducted about 20 California searches and 30-plus in other Western states and worked with about 100 boards in board retreats, again, focusing on effective governance. And I continue even now to be very active in leadership development where we are developing new leaders for our community colleges. So with ACCT and with us, you will get the national organization and the national base, but you'll also have a very close relationship with California-based people. While I would be the person you would see and work with you, work with your search committee, work with your community groups and any other folks that you have identified as appropriate, you need to know I would be backed by a large team of people in Washington who are responsible for some of the marketing, all of the IT, for the web portal, which is how we process our applications. And then, of course, equally important for the reference reports. We make a point to delineate between the search consultant that's working with you and the consultants that are doing reference reports. I'd also like to just point out that it may not be totally clear that we actually do two sets of reference reports. When you have identified semifinalists for first-level interviews, we will actually do preliminary reference reports at that time. So we make sure we don't get too far down the line with someone for whom there is a significant issue. Once the finalists have been identified, of course, then we go in and do an in-depth 20-page report that is made, that information then is shared only with the board, not on a broader base. But it's an important part of the process. So looking at what we're doing, just quickly at the handout that is there, I want to, I'd like to skip over to page five about the values because I think this is really important. This is the board's search. And since I work a lot with boards and reminding them of their roles, I like being able to say to you, this is probably the single most important thing you will ever do, which is select and then support, work with, evaluate your president. So it's your search. We will share with you what we think are best practices. In the long run, you make the final decision. We will encourage you to be involved at the very beginning, to have representatives of your board be involved with the search committee and the middle part of the process. And then we encourage you to take ownership of the process at the end where the final decision is yours. And as I said earlier, we would be supporting you all along the way, including working with you and your new president after they arrive, should you so desire. But even though it supports process, we also know that the president will not be effective once onboard unless, in fact, the whole college community feels that the process has, in fact, been fair. So it's really important to us that we are very open about the process, very transparent. We share everything that is legal to share. We provide opportunity for broad-based input, again, at the beginning with representatives at the middle and then with everybody at the end where they get to meet the finalists. And along the way, we work with the board president and/or board, or committee chair if it's not the same person, to help you put out progress reports to the whole college community so they know where we are in each step and how they can participate and exactly what's going on. Another way that we do that is working with your staff to set up a webpage that is devoted specifically to the search. That's another thing I should commend you on. I saw that you've already put out a notice recruiting community volunteers and letting people know that the process is beginning. And that too was very impressive. So in terms of the values, trying to be inclusive, certainly being fair and equitable. And one thing that isn't on here that I need to mention, this comes up a little bit later, but I think it's important. The confidentiality of one part of the search, namely the names of the applicants, is really critical. So critical that search committees get tired of me talking about it. The confidentiality has to be maintained for the integrity of the process. And we emphasize and encourage, actually coerce and threaten about that so much because if we don't, it's very simple and I will tell your search committee this. If we don't, you will lose your best candidates. You are an exemplary institution and I'm not telling you that just to make yourself feel good. But because you have the reputation you do, there's a very high likelihood that we would be able to attract sitting presidents. Sitting presidents will not put their name in the pool if they are not totally confident that confidentiality will be maintained unless and until they are finalists, in which case they have to take their hits at that point. Being one of three or four finalists is one thing. Being one of 40, 50 or 60 applicants is another. And they simply won't do it. So if there starts to be rumors or gossip or leaks about the applicant pool, many of your good people, your best people will simply pull out. And that's a really important factor. And because we've been on that kick, if you will, for at least the 12 years that I've been doing this with ACCT, I think we have established a reputation with our colleagues so that when we reach out to them and talk to them about why they ought to consider Santa Barbara if they aren't already, they are reassured by the fact that we are so militant, if you will, about the confidentiality aspect. If we are selected to work with you, of course, some of the first things that would happen are pretty straightforward. We would want to meet with you and the board as a whole. We would be on campus to have open forums and get input from the campus community as well as the public community. We would work with your search committee and provide training for them. And all of that activity, and in addition, before coming, we would collect electronic input from folks who are not able to be there in person. And all of that goes into the development of the profile for what it is you're looking for in a new president and what the challenges and opportunities Santa Barbara is facing in the next three to five years. That profile becomes what I like to refer to as a kind of contract. We're promising candidates. That's what we're looking for. And you as a board would actually, as part of the training for the committee, be giving the committee a charge which says, among other things, stay confidential and follow our profile, make your decisions based on the profile. And that becomes really our guide. So that's why that profile is so very important. And it takes a few weeks to do that. It might even take as much as a month. Because the more dialogue we have at the beginning about what you need and what you're seeking, what the college needs at this point in its history, which, by the way, might be different than what it was three years ago, five years ago, or even five years from now, what does it need right now, needs to be reflected in that profile so the candidate can see that. But above all, so that we know that, we at ACCT, as we're trying to look for the best matches for you. So the more, the better I know you with respect to that, the better we'll be able to help make that match. As far as the actual marketing and advertising, we will be, again, make that national-based. We will, as soon, if we were selected, as soon as you were, we had a contract with you, you would actually go up, your opening would go up on our website immediately, even before we do any of this other work. It's a preliminary, but it lets the world know that the opening exists, that the profile is coming and also lets them know how to get ahold of us if they'd like more information even at this point. But it puts people on notice. And of course, once the profile's done, everything that we advertise and recruit and on all the advertisements even that your HR people would place would all refer back to the webpage and to my contact information. So we get the word out. Again, we draw on our national network. And then the final thing that I would say is with respect to communication, which is kind of where I started, the climate that you create during the search process can have a lot to do with how effective your president is in the earliest stages of their tenure with you. So we are trying to establish trust and we do that with the openness and inclusion that I talked about. We do that by telling people what's happening and keeping them up to date, giving them opportunity for input and feedback. And lastly, for you as a board, making ourselves available for you 24/7. And speaking as someone who works with people across the country and deals with four time zones, I can tell you that the boards with whom I've worked take advantage of the 24/7 and my phone gets answered at all times of the day and night. And that's just fine because I am happy to be able to answer any questions that come up. In addition to the regular search processes, I haven't worked with a college yet during a search where something else didn't come up. Something else always comes up in terms of wondering, how might we handle this? A political issue, a personnel issue, a community issue, whatever it is. Whatever those are, to the extent that we are able to be a sounding board in assistance to you, we would do that. And then I would just conclude, when this can come up more in your questions perhaps, there's one thing in the proposal itself that I personally would recommend be slightly modified and that's the timeline. modified, and that's the timeline. But the important thing about the timeline is that's something we would discuss and develop together, and I, and you don't have to consider what's in the proposal hard and fast. I understand that you'd want somebody onboard in January, early January, for January 1st, and to do that, you'll need to be done by sometime in November. But as I looked at the somewhat generic outline in our own proposal, one of the things that struck me is that I would, I would recommend including, lengthening the recruitment period a few weeks, maybe just three or four weeks, and you'd still be done by the end of October, but it would allow recruitment to still occur in early September when some folks, some presidents, some vice presidents, might just be coming aware of the opening for whatever reason, as opposed to trying to end it during August. But that's something that we could discuss at a later date if we are in a position to discuss it. So with that, I'll stop and be happy to try and answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. Let me, let me just start by asking, I think you mentioned that, that, had you personally been involved in 20 searches, is that correct?
In California.
Okay.
In California. I've done over 50 across, in the western states.
Were you the, were you the lead consultant on those 20?
Yes, yes.
Okay, very good. Any, any other questions? Dr. Haslam?
I have a bunch.
Okay.
My primary concern is one of proximity. You're not here. You're, you're in Montana. What can you say that will put me at ease with that distance?
Well, I guess I would start by saying, in this day and age, it's really a non-issue. I am in California frequently, working with other boards, doing other things. I will be onsite with you for all of the four visits that are outlined in the proposal. I am present at state and national events all the time where we're recruiting, and the recruitment that you do with people is certainly not done in person. That's done by telephone and other electronic methods. So I would, I will be there whenever you need me. That's, it's, it's almost transparent, and I, I'm open about where I live, so you know that, but it would make no difference. I, let's just say I am a frequent flyer, and I know my way around the states, and it's just non-issue, and I'll be available to you 24/7, and I'll be onsite whenever you want me to be there. And I, but in-between times is when the real work occurs, which is what I'm doing as I reach out personally. I might add, because I've done so many searches, that, and I was thinking about this recently because someone asked me, I, I think I'm at 53, 55, I haven't counted them up recently, maybe a handful of those, the board selected an interim, not an interim, internal person. So if you take out the internal candidates who finally, who became the president, and you look at the others, 95% of those placements were all people that I had personally recruited. In other words, there might be 50 people in the applicant pool, and I would have personally recruited 20 or 25 of those, and inevitably, the ones that make it to the finalists are the ones that I personally recruited and certainly the ones that get selected by the board. And it's not because I'm affecting the board decision, I have nothing to do with that, and I have very little to do with the search committee's decision, other than making sure they've looked at their resumes and considered the relevant information. My point being, the recruitment part is very one-on-one, and especially when you're looking for high-powered people, that's where, how it works the best. And I can assure you that when that happens, where I'm living is irrelevant. Most people don't even know where I'm living. So I, all I can promise you is that been through, like I said, 50, 55 positive searches and part of them in Calif, a significant part of them in California, but they've also been as far away as Kentucky. And so the, the justice was really a non-issue.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Trustee Abud.
No questions. Thank you for the awesome presentation.
Thank you.
Trustee Parker.
Sure, I have a few questions. First of all, can you give us a little bit more information about your reference checking process, the process?
Sure.
You said it's divided. What exactly is the other team doing?
Okay. What happens is that, you know, when we solicit the application, we ask the candidate to submit eight names, and it's a cross-section of supervisors, people that supervise them, peers, et cetera. That reference list is used by our trained reference consultants if, if the candidate becomes a semifinalist. And a semifinalist are those six, seven, eight people that the search committee wants to invite for a first-level interview. We call them semifinalists. At that point, as soon as they're invited, our reference consultants are calling and talking in person with the on-list references. They prepare a report for me, which I have available, when I meet with the committee and the committee conducts the interviews, and after the interviews have identified what they think are the three or four that they want to forward, and I share what information I have with them. I tell the committee, among other things, that those preliminary reference reports, and they also include, of course, Google searches, but those reports should be all positive, because the people, the candidates put people's names on there. The surprising thing is, they're not always positive. They will have put people's names on there, and those people will candidly talk with us and say, not with me, but with the reference consultants, and say, well, yeah, he gets a lot of done, but he really has a temper, so you don't want to cross him. Or she's really good at this, but will honor good days. And if we find out that kind of information, even at that point, obviously that gives us, gives us great pause, because they should, in fact, be positive. That said, if the preliminaries are positive, if the committee chooses to forward them, they become a finalist, now our reference report consultants really go to work. And what they do is they go what we call off-list. They go totally off-list. They do not rely on anybody that was put down by the candidate. They go to the college itself. They go to the leadership. They go to the faculty leadership, the union leadership. They go to foundation members, if they can find the connections, and they, and they get connections from those people, leads. They'll even go to community people. And then they'll do the same thing for, if they haven't been in the institution for a long time, if they've been in the institution for 10 or 12 years, there's not a whole lot of reason to go farther back. But if they've only been there two, three, four, five years, then we're going to go back to the institution they were in before that position and do the same thing. And if we discover something problematic, something controversial, and we ask about those, we have a list of about 20, 25 questions that we go through that are fairly open-ended. And if something comes up, it catches the consultant's attention, then they'll go down that path further, and if it's controversial in particular, they will even say, is there, are there any other people you would recommend that we talk to about that? And regardless of what we hear from them in terms of leads, the consultant will then go and seek out, let's say it's a conflict between labor and management, and they're talking to the union officer. Okay, that's good, they need to do that. But they're also going to go and talk to the people that were on the other side. They're going to go and talk to a board member that perhaps was closely involved with that collective bargaining process or whatever it might be. So we seek multiple opinions on anything that could, or on everything, but especially anything that's controversial. And so you get a very, very comprehensive report. I should, this may help you, too. The candidates have to sign a release form for us that says we can go and do what we're doing, and they give up their right to ask to see the results of that report, because legally, they can ask for those results. So we make sure that they have said that we do not have to release it. And then the second part of that is that, just as I was sharing about ACCT's reputation for confidentiality, when, when our consultants are interviewing colleagues, if they know ACCT, they know how our process works about the confidentiality of the reference reports. If they don't know ACCT, then the consultant shares that information with the person they're interviewing and says, we want to let you know that the candidate has signed a release form, and not only will they not be able to see the results, that your input will be consolidated with input from other people, and we will not be identifying who said what. So even when I'm making a report to you as a board at the end about a finalist you're considering, and I will be able to tell you, you know, we interviewed a number of faculty, and there was consensus, and they said this, but I won't tell you who said what. The only time it's difficult to not reveal who said what is if I'm talking about their immediate supervisor who, you know, because I'm going to have to tell you, this is what supervisor said. But other than that, the others are, they too are confidential. The end result is they're willing to be very candid with us. Having done this now for more than a decade, I can tell you that I have learned things about colleagues that I had worked with professionally in another setting, you know, at a state or national level, that were quite surprising. And so it's very, very thorough, and you as a board would have that information.
Thank you. One question I would have asked is about a transition workshop, but it sounds like you absolutely do that after a hire.
Yes.
That's something that a board wants to do.
Absolutely.
And then my last question is, you, there's a section on the contract that's about applicant diversity. Can you talk in any more detail about that? How is it that, that the organization goes about ensuring that there is a diverse applicant pool?
Well, we use all the strategies of which we are aware. Obviously, the easiest one is the recruitment, and we work with your human resource department on that, too, the recruitment via the publications that target people of color and specialized groups. So we do that, for sure, but that's an easy one. More complicated one is our own network of having worked, and I mentioned earlier, about leadership development. ACCT in general, and then some of us specifically who are working with ACCT have been very involved for years in groups that promote the leadership of people of color. I'm a frequent speaker at organizations like that. In California, I have been leading, I almost hesitate to say how many years now, but for 35 years have been leading the ASIOMR Women's Leadership Seminar in California, which has specifically gone out of its way to recruit not women, but specifically women of color. We have the same for our national organizations, and we work with them regularly, especially the leadership of those organizations. And we go to them, and we'd say, okay, we, this is what we're looking for, this is what this institution needs. Who's, who's up and coming in the pipeline that we don't already know? Now, don't get me wrong, we have thousands of people on our own list, but we also reach out to the leadership of groups that are specifically developing their own people within their own organization and ask them for nominations and leads, recommendations, whatever term we choose to use. I have found that when, once we put something out, and part of it's our reputation, it's my opinion, but at least for me, when I've had a search that I was leading, I hear regularly from my own colleagues who work in those circles and will point me in the direction of people that I might have missed. On the other hand, again, I guess that's one of the things that comes with age and experience, I've worked with a lot of people, both in California and outside of California, that represent diversity of all kinds, and I immediately go to work and reach, and reach out to them. So it's, it's broad-based with the national organization, national recruitment, but I still say it comes back down to the personal recruitment. And I don't know how to say this and not sound inappropriate, so I'm just going to say it. The people with whom I work trust me, and I have been asked more than once, is this really the right place for a gay president? Is this really the right place for a woman of color? Are they ready for me? Those are the kinds of questions I receive on a regular basis, and based on my knowledge of the organization, I answer them honestly. I will say, I discourage, I don't know if I should, I know I'm being video, so I should be careful what I say here. I've discouraged people, one time when I did a search in Hazard, Kentucky, and I said, you're welcome to apply, here's what it's like there. And I think that kind of openness and candidness also develops a reputation for trust, which helps us with respect to that. If you look at the track record for ACCT, you'll see that in terms of, that we place a lot of first-time presidents, we place a lot of women, and we place a lot of people of color.
Thank you.
Trustee Guerido.
I don't have any questions, other than I appreciate that you highlighted the process that you are just as interested in protecting our interests, but the candidate. And I just feel like this is such an emotional thing for president candidates to go through, and that you would be careful to highlight and care for the humanity behind this whole process, and, and that these are people that we want to come here, but that they, that they, they, that whoever you recruit, that the process is fair for them and that they see it through, because I just, I wouldn't want someone, you know, just get them someone because we've hired you to do that, but that you're protecting that candidate as much as us to make sure it's a right fit, and it's a good thing for everyone.
If, if I can respond to that, because I appreciate that comment, to me, that is incredibly important. I feel, this is, this is going to be, I hope this doesn't sound too sexist. I almost feel like this whole process is a gestation period, and I'm really concerned about the product, and I'm really concerned that the product be a success for you. When your search is done, there are some other people who were really good who did not get selected. And so for me, it is really important that all the way along, but above all, once they get to that semifinalist and finalist stage, they're going to hear from me regularly. I will be talking to them and be there with them all the way. I will make it as, be, not only to be as open and candid, but as helpful as I can be with all of them, right up to, through, and including their visit on campus with you. And just recently, I completed a search in an environment that is quite different than yours. It was rural Wyoming. It was much harder to recruit for than it would be for Santa Barbara, but they had a good pool, and they had people who wanted to live in Wyoming and wanted to be there. And when it was over, the two finalists who were not selected both said to me, and it's not the first time this has happened, I'm really disappointed I didn't get it, but I'm really glad I applied. I appreciate how I was treated all the way through, and I'm ready to try again, and I, and I would work with you again. And I guess I, as I say that, I can tell you that that's not the first time I've heard that, and that oftentimes, I have had candidates who were not successful, who almost made it, they were number two, number whatever, and then they came back, and they came through another search with us and were successful. And I think had we not treated them with the humanity that you're talking about, they wouldn't have worked with us again. So over the years, I think that reputation helps us as well. Besides, it's just the right thing to do. This, these are people's lives that we are, that we're impacting, and I'd like it to be prime, as positive as possible, even though if you have four good finalists, only one can be selected, I'd like the other three to walk away and say, I still feel good about Santa Barbara City College, and I still feel good about ACCT, and then I will feel that we were successful.
Trustee Croninger.
Well, thank you for that discussion, because I think it is a tremendously important point and one that has not been brought up explicitly in previous search efforts that I'm familiar with, and I've been through two of them now. But I think it is really important, how the candidates feel about the experience, whether or not they get the job. That's a, that's a benchmark. One quick question, we had asked that ACCT not, agree not to recruit someone they place for at least three years. Is that any kind of problem?
No, that's our usual, I think, I thought it was in the contract.
I think it may have been, too, but I just wanted to reconfirm that.
Oh, yes, absolutely. Now, I can't guarantee that somebody might apply on their own, but they will not be contacted. Now, I can't guarantee that somebody might apply on their own, but they will not be contacted by us.
Yeah, well, I can appreciate the difference, yes. And you've already spoken also to a question that I was interested in, which was the, the reach outside California as well as within, and I think you've certainly covered that. So I'll pass on to Craig.
This is my second search that I've been through, or starting on the second one, but not the first time I've hired people. So, but the last time we did the search and we had like three finalists, and it was not, we didn't use you. And I was kind of disappointed, I thought, but we got a really good candidate, I was happy with that. But what I wasn't, what I wasn't happy about it was like there were three of them, and one of them just was way out of the league of the other two. And I thought, you know, usually you end up with people that are a little more equal. I would, I would wonder if, I would be extremely happy if it was a hard decision for us, which one to choose than an easy decision, if you get my drift. And I was wondering if it may be inappropriate to ask even because it's a hard question, how do you address trying to get the best candidates like that when you narrow it down so that we don't end up with, like, well, really, there's only one?
Well, first of all, we try to get you the strongest pool possible. The real challenge is your search committee, because your search committee narrowed that applicant pool down to, say, the six or seven semifinalists. So the first thing is making sure that the best semifinalists are selected. And your search committee has a lot of power over that. I assume you will have at least two trustees, I don't know what, if you have a written policy about board participation on the search committee, we would recommend that there be at least two, I wouldn't say at least, I will say we would recommend there would be two trustees on the search committee, one of whom is chair of the search committee. The search committee has the ultimate authority on who those people are that are invited, and what I like to see is that the trustees on the search committee agree with the committee that these are, let's say, seven, these are the seven best, from what we can tell on paper, and from what Pam can tell us about what she knows about them. Some of them I'll know, some of them I won't. Then, when you move to the next level and you have interviewed them, that's when the dialogue gets pretty intense with the, with the search committee, as you weigh the pros and cons of what you saw. And of course, then I'm able to provide more reference material. And if there is a candidate that I think is really problematic, I'm going to call it to their attention, but I'm, hopefully, there's some wise people on your search committee who also see that and speak to it, and that would include a trustee or two that would be there if necessary. In general, on a search committee, I hope that trustees don't have to say a lot, that they get to listen a lot, and that they feel comfortable with the decisions that the committee makes, so that when they come back and they confer with you folks, they're able to say to you, to your point, "These were the, we did interview the seven best, and we did send you the three best ones." If there's a good one in there, and for some reason the committee doesn't want them, we're going to talk about that quite a bit. And, but in the final analysis, if your charge to the search committee is, "Send us the three you think are best," I like to say three to four, so you give us some wiggle room, so that, let's say, a committee agrees, here's two that are excellent, they got to go forward to the board. And now here's two more, but the committee's split, and some lean toward one, some lean toward another, but they can live with either one. If that's what happens, and again, if the trustees on the committee concur, then my recommendation to the committee is to not send all four and let the board decide. And if that happens, sir, then you're more likely that one of those is not going to be as strong as the others. But sometimes we get surprised, too. Sometimes, sometimes a candidate does better in the open forum, in the board interview, than they did at the first level interview. And again, if you've had trustee representation on the search committee, then they can speak to that, too. I always caution search committees themselves when their work is done, and we're very clear about their charge. Once they've sent their names forward to you, they are done. And now it's in the board's hands. Now, there'll be an open forum, they can come, they can fill out comments about the candidates, but the deliberation part on their part is done, it's now in the board's hands. But when the board's deliberating, and I would be there to participate and help however I can, but the committee member, or the trustees who were on the committee and are now talking to their colleagues, might very well say to you, "You know, I've changed my mind now that I've seen the forum, and now that they've interviewed with us, and here's why." And all of which is valuable, but going back to your basic question, how can I guarantee that you got the three best? I do my very best, but you want to make sure you have the best possible people on the search committee. The people who are wise and open-minded, and I would say, in my experience with so many of these, the few times, and there have been a few times, when candidates were forwarded that I never, I, you know, I used to hire presidents when I was a chancellor, there have been a few times when candidates were forwarded that I would not have forwarded if I had the authority. They've never been terrible, but they weren't the best, in my opinion. I have come to believe now that the committee is doing the best it can, and then the board has to decide, was that good enough? The only time I have seen the process, and I hesitate to use this word, but I'm going to use it, somewhat corrupted, is in a couple of occasions where the, some committee members did all they could in their power to forward an internal candidate that should not have been forwarded. That should, had that candidate been in any other search, in an unbiased search in another college, they wouldn't have been forwarded. But because of their relationships with people on the committee, they got forwarded. When that happens, then, of course, the decision lands back in the lap of the board itself. And, but that's, that's what we pay you for, right? You get to make the big decisions. And I don't know any other way around that, other than just try to make your committee be as, as wise and strong as possible.
Thank you very much.
Trustee Wallace.
Thank you, I do. Thank you for taking the time to speak to us today, Dr. Fisher. We really appreciate it. My question is, given your depth of experience being a part of executive searches of this nature, what can you say you've learned in your experiences that you may wish you would have known when you were starting out?
Oh, yeah, that's a stinker question. I'm laughing because I like to ask that question of other people. And now I've got, the table's turned. I think, a couple, one practical one and one philosophical one is what first comes to mind. The practical one is be very, very clear and precise with a search committee, starting with their orientation and training about where their role begins and where it ends, and about the fact that the board has hired us to guide a process based on best practices, and some of those practices are not open for discussion. Because occasionally, I will get search committee members, including occasionally a community member, who wants to change the process. So we work really hard from the very beginning, that very first meeting, and I need the backing of the board and the backing of the trustees who are on the committee to reinforce that, no, this is how the process works, and you don't get to change the rules in the middle of the game. Pretty much got that down, took me two or three searches to learn that, and it still gets challenged every now and then, and I will go back and share that. The philosophical thing that I've learned is that I, I'm a very straightforward person, and I'm, I try to be diplomatic, but I'm also candid and honest and open. And I will share information with the search committee that I think they need to know. I will provide caution if I think they're going off the deep end. I will occasionally step in if they're going to eliminate a candidate that I think is really strong and would do well, or at least deserves to go to the next level, and they're going to eliminate them because of a faux pas they made during the interview, or because their cellphone went off in the interview, or they didn't like the clothes they had on in an interview, but everything else was really positive. If that happens, I will work hard to challenge their thinking, but when all is said and done, the committee has to do what it thinks is best, and that may or may not be what I think is best. Just as when I work with the board, the board has to decide what is best for them, and what they think is best for the institution, even if it might be a different decision than what I would have made as chancellor. And it took me a while to learn that, but I got it now.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, any follow-up? Dr. Haslam.
I, I'm going to assume that you've done your homework and understand a great deal about Santa Barbara City College, and like the rest of us sitting here, we feel pretty strongly about this institution, what it does, and its mission. But I'd be curious, what, what, what aspect of Santa Barbara City College would you find most difficult to sell to a candidate? Are there, are there problems that you can identify that, that might be problematic and we should know about?
Okay. Well, first of all, you have an excellent reputation, but I don't feel like I know you really well yet. So I, part of my homework, should I be working with you, will be to learn a heck of a lot more, and that'll start with my many conversations, both in-person and electronic, to learn that. So I, I'm going to hedge that a little bit. I think the biggest concern people will have, quite frankly, is the price of housing. I think that's what I'm going to hear about. I know that because I've done searches in other areas where the housing prices, unless your, housing prices have somehow gone lower since the last time I checked them out, that will be an issue. That will be an issue for people if they don't already live in a place that is that expensive. So they're going to ask about that.
Rest assured, they've not gone down.
That's what I assumed, okay. So that's going to be an issue, and that's going to be an issue for you as a board to deal with and think about. People are going to ask about housing, they're going to ask about compensation, but they're going to ask about housing, and is there a housing allowance or whatever? So housing's going to be an issue for you, I guarantee it. I've had more than, I've done some other searches in Southern California where housing was extremely problematic. And in Northern California, the search at Foothill Deans, it was a huge issue for their chancellor. As it turned out, they ended up with an internal candidate, but it was a major problem in terms of getting some folks to even apply, and then for the board to grapple with, what were they going to do about it, should they fall in love with another candidate? The other question, and I'm taking a risk here, is you've had some publicity recently, some controversy over the issue of diversity and equity, and people are going to ask about that. They're going to, they're going, people who've done their homework are going to ask about that. I don't know a lot about it. I saw the resolution that you just passed a couple of weeks ago, and I think that resolution will be a positive thing for those who are asking about the issue, but they're going to want to know more about it. Right now, I can't answer that question for them, but that's something I'd have to be prepared to answer. So those are two very different kinds of things that come to mind. By and large, it's easy to promote Santa Barbara.
Thank you.
Okay, hearing no other follow-up questions, we'll, again, thank you, Dr. Fisher, for your time, and stay warm in the snow.
Thank you. Well, it just tricked us a little bit, it's not too bad. Just enough that I had to go out and cover all my flowers. So, I'm still a Californian at heart, I just keep trying to change this place. So, but thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And we would be honored to work with you, but whether we are working with you or not, we wish you the best. We know how really important this decision is and the impact it has on your future, so I wish you the best in that effort. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good night now.
Good night.
Okay, so before we begin discussion on this item, we have two public speaker slips, one from Rhonda Hughesgen, is Rhonda still here? And the second one is from Denise.
You have a very important responsibility coming up, and on behalf of the community that I'm involved with, I wanted to address the issues. I learned a lot from listening to the presentations, starting with that it's important to have confidentiality, or we could lose our best candidates. We also heard that we have some problems with the board that are unresolved, and I want to ensure each of you that we're going to make sure that those problems stay in the national headlines until you resolve them. We will drive the media, we will get lawsuits, we will do what it takes to make sure that every candidate that comes here knows the caliber board that we have at City College. We used to be the number one community college because we have leadership. We don't have it anymore. Our responses go unanswered. We agree with the protesting students that when you file a legitimate complaint, and your board policies say you have 10 days to respond, and you go on for 130, 140 days, that's not good. It's also not good when you have a conflicted legal firm that has a conflict of interest, and none of you will address it. I've been saying this since December, nothing's happened. Anyway, you have some open cases, and I would like to address that the most important thing to us is that the process be very open to the community, that the community be involved, that the students be involved, that there be transparency. We have learned that there's no standards in this college for faculty, there are no standards of conduct. If you work in the private sector, there's personnel manuals, you have criteria that you must follow. There's none here. There's only one clause about harassment. The harassment is against other people in this college. As a member of the public, I have no protection. When I stand here, I have none. I am 100% dependent on your board president, who refuses to provide security or call for security. Moreover, our sheriff's department at our January 24th, and was not called February 14th, when the sheriff was present, we were told by the public sheriff that he had a stand-down order, that he was only to respond to the public if ordered by the president. There are so many problems at this university. When your applicants come forward, we'll make sure that they're aware of the problems that you have. You have a faculty senate president who is under investigation by your chancellor's office, your accreditation office, by your union, and that faculty senate person is the person who's instigating the problems. I want you to know that the problems at City College, when they're attributed to our people of color, they are instigated by three white people. The white faculty, the white board people, on your trustees. And I want to point out to you, trustee Abud, that Arabs are white by law in our country. So when you come on your Facebook and you say that you want to make whites politically irrelevant, that you whites are the enemy of America, you are a white by law in the United States of America. We are working for the 2020 census to make a separate category for North Africans and Middle Easterners, because we understand that you would prefer to be a hyphenated American. But as of now, you are technically by law in the United States, white. What I learned last night at your racial equity lecture is that basically in America, we're green. We are related, the whites have, are associated with prestige, power, access, and opportunity or networking, but technically, it's green. People with money have better access networking. This institution was created, supported by donors, West Campus was purchased, we want We want every student, every student to have equity of opportunity. We want them to have the challenges of life to be addressed through lifelong learning, that they have the tools to deal with the complexities of life. We support this college, we love this college, we want it to be number one. And it all starts with you. What are you going to do with Dr. Abud, who doesn't like whites, with the chairperson, Mr. Miller, who has a violation against him? Two of those people are on your search committee, and you've got a faculty senator who's under investigation. Until it's resolved, we're going to keep it in the public. So watch to see what comes. Thank you.
Do we have any, concerning the two applicants, the two consultant applicants, do we have any comments from our committee before we go on to wider discussion? Is there a recommendation from the committee? Okay. Then, I'd ask for comments.
I felt that the ACCT applicant was very strong with a wealth of experience and credentials, and I really enjoyed her presentation. I think they're the applicant to go with. So that's where I'm at.
Any other comments? Trustee Croninger?
I would agree that, I mean, both candidates, I would say thank you and appreciate their presentations. But our candidate from ACCT clearly has a great depth of experience, which I think would be advantageous to us.
Anyone else?
I'm just going to agree with my two colleagues on this one. I think that this is, of course, we all believe that this college is incredibly important to our community. And as much as I appreciated the CCSS presentation, it really is about the consultant's experience. And I think somebody that's gone through 50 searches versus just one, I think that for us, it would just be better served.
I agree. I thought the, on paper and the presentation, I thought that Dr. Fisher's offers us the, easily the best opportunity.
Correct me if I'm wrong, though, don't they have, so Eva Conrad's on here in the ACCT, don't they offer, these folks are going to have the wealth of a cross-functional team within CCSS, correct? So it's not that she won't be able to consult with John or Eva, who did our previous search?
Well, actually, in our previous search with Eva, who was from CCSS, is it CCSS?
Mm-hmm.
John Romo was supposed to be the backup person, and that didn't happen at all. And I felt that that was disappointing, because it was a factor in selecting, I thought, in the initial instance.
Yeah.
But, you know, whatever happens, it really is the one person we just interviewed that you are interacting with.
Yeah. And I think this is a, my impression from hearing both presentations, it's a very individual-oriented activity. In other words, I don't think the consultant we hire, we're not hiring a committee, we're really hiring an individual. And in the past, in other venues, hiring consultants, I've seen mistakes made where consultants have been hired based on the reputation of the company or the firm and not the individual. And I think that the individual is really critically important here. And I think the experience of Dr. Fisher just is very impressive to me. Dr. Haslam?
Yeah. Dr. Benjamin, would you care to offer your interview?
I do not.
I was afraid of that. But you, I suspect, would if you felt we were going in the wrong direction.
I probably would not on this.
Okay.
Any other comments? If there's not, I'd ask for a motion. Trustee Abud?
Motion to accept the proposal from ACCT for our search.
A second.
Any further comment? Is this a roll call? Okay.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think my only comment would be, I, well, I think I like small, and I like, look, I don't always think that big is better. And there, this is a very politically volatile community, and it has its unique DNA. So unique that it almost morphs into something completely different overnight, and then different again, and then sometimes depending on the weather, different again. So California is super unique in everything we do. That, what leans me towards CCSS is just the understanding of how complex and nutty California is. And so, new to recruitment, yes. New to the system, no. New to the ins and outs of California, no, absolutely not. Fresh off the real nitty-gritty ground of what this job is about, she just, right, most recently retired. These jobs, I don't even think we can write job descriptions for. I think these folks enter, and then there's no PhD or dot-dot behind their names that could prepare them for what our institutions are facing right now. So I'm going to go with Ms. Joan Smith, just by sheer of just California.
I agree with, I agree with your concerns. However, I'd note that Dr. Fisher has, I think she answered my question, personally led 20 searches for California community colleges. And she was also, I believe she was a chancellor at Yosemite.
The same district, the exact same.
That's why I kept getting confused when I read that, that they were both at the same, same college district. So she has a vast experience in California, which I think is important. If she didn't have those connections with California, I would totally agree with your concern.
Yeah, she was chancellor 12 years, which is longer than Dr. Fisher.
Any other comments? And then call, call the vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
So we have one, one no vote, and the rest, yes, on the motion. Motion passes.
Do you want me to notify the candidates?
Yes. Thank you, Dr. Benjamin.
Yeah, let's not keep it secret.
So when we interrupted the discussion of AB 705 and guided pathways and vision for success, so I'm going to let you decide, Dr. Ralston, how we proceed on this. I guess we finished one out of the four.
Three.
Three topics. Okay.
I think after granting Professor Prothero an honorary doctorate, we'll go ahead and call her back up to the podium. So Margaret is our faculty coordinator for Guided Pathways, and that is a great program that we are really happy to have been a part of, the California Guided Pathways Project, a very specialized group of colleges working on this project, about a year before it deployed more largely across the state. And Margaret's going to come and talk to you briefly about kind of the scope of the initiative, and then she'll be coming back for a deeper study session earlier in the summer. We expect to see Dr. Cruz come back at some point in, in fall, after we roll out those classes that you heard about that are going to be affected by AB 705. So Margaret's going to join me. And then we'll follow up tonight with the first reading of the Vision for Student Success Goals that are a component of a requirement for us with the chancellor's office. So thank you.
I had good afternoon, but I crossed it out. I'm Margaret Prothero, and for the last 21 years, I've had the honor to be a faculty member in the Department of English Skills here at SBCC. For the last year and a half, I've had the privilege to serve the campus in the role of Guided Pathways Faculty Coordinator. Today, I'll give you a very brief overview of Guided Pathways. Next month, I'll return to go into much more depth and details of what we've accomplished to date and to outline what work we have left to do. So first, Santa Barbara City College is an incredible educational institution. Tomorrow, we will see hundreds of students walk across the stage at commencement and receive associate degrees, degrees to transfer, and certificates that they have worked so hard to earn at SBCC. We celebrate them, we are so proud of them, and so happy to play a role in their success. However, it is true that there are students who never make it to that stage, who have given up on their education somewhere along the line. And that group is comprised of some of our most vulnerable student populations, including students of color, first-generation students, and low-income students. The work of Guided Pathways is anti-racism, anti-poverty work, looking to identify and remove barriers to success, close equity gaps, and increase the success of all of our students while supporting their goals. Guided Pathways is about finding all the ways we can help students navigate college, from the moment they begin their application, through every step they need to make, until they successfully reach their goals of degree, certificate, transfer, or earning, entering a new career. This description here was from the California Guided Pathways Project, designed to substantially increase the number of students who earn a certificate or degree at a community college, California Community College. The project will help California community colleges implement an integrated, institution-wide approach to student success by creating structured educational experiences that support each student from point of entry to attainment of high-quality post-secondary credentials and careers. You might hear the term "guided pathways" a lot. It is both national and regional. So just a little background on that. There is a nationwide Guided Pathways Project by the American Association of Community Colleges, the AACC. Then from there started an offshoot called the California Guided Pathways Project, which based itself on the other model, of which we were selected to be one of 20 colleges to participate in this intensive accelerated three-year project. There's also, oh, here are the 20 colleges. There is also another Guided Pathways Program set forth by the chancellor's office, part of the Vision for Success, called the California Community Colleges Guided Pathways Program, as the state overall is working on these changes to reduce barriers and, to access and help students avoid taking too many units. So our work in the intensive group helps lead the way for the rest of these colleges in the state, as we are charged with innovating, creating, and trying new ways to meet our students' needs. But across the state and the nation, community colleges are all committing to making structural changes that will simplify, clarify, and benefit all students. These are the four pillars of Guided Pathways work: clarity, entry, support, and learning. The pillar image is a common one used in guided pathways colleges across the country. But we at City College added the words "above and below the pillars" on this image, because our team wants to emphasize and make as clear as possible that at SBCC, our guided pathways focus is students. The issue is closing equity gaps and opportunities missed, and our priority strategies are integrated, strength assets-based, equity-driven, labor-market-informed, rigorous academics, and comprehensive student supports and services. So very briefly, clarify the path and enter the path have to do with supporting students from initial contact through their first days of classes, including outreach, orientation, counseling, career exploration, registration, financial aid. Stay on the path and ensure learning are about the ways we support students affectively and cognitively, structure deliberate and intentional academic and co-curricular opportunities, and provide support for faculty development, faculty-student engagement, effective teaching and learning pedagogies and practices. I'll be talking more about these important changes when I return next month. Our team wrote the following guiding philosophy for Guided Pathways at City College about identifying and removing barriers to success. I won't take the time to read them out loud right now, but I want to emphasize number three, which we feel is especially important. To create an environment where each student feels they belong here, we want them here, and that they deserve to be here. We believe that fostering belonging and connection is at the heart of our student's success and needs to be at the heart of our guided pathways work, inside our classrooms and out. Most current scholarship about supporting marginalized students is about the affective, which is the social-emotional side of students, and learning. Our Affective Learning Institute, ally created by Elizabeth Imhoff, has provided professional development in this area at SBCC for over 114 staff and faculty, with another institute of 25 participants in August and continuing next year. So far, there have been over 100 faculty, staff, and managers who have worked together to do amazing creative research planning, discussions, and solution findings and work teams over this past year and a half. I want to publicly recognize the work of our core team, our Core Plus team, our Student Advisory Council, all who are in the pillar groups, Meta Majors team, mapping planning, mapping field testing, mapping Phase One teams, pathways coaches, questions and ideas team, video team, enrollment committee, data teams, sense survey administrators, coaches, career center liaisons, and more. They have all done exceptional forward-thinking work that will greatly benefit our campus and students, and this is just the beginning. This is a photo of a small portion of the people who have been working on Guided Pathways, our Core Plus team, after working with our state mentor Roger Purnell Mack in the Center at a two-day workshop on campus in January. These are more of the teams doing guided pathways work at SBCC that I listed a moment ago. I hope you get a sense of how many people have been pulling together to take on this huge task of institutional reform on the behalf of our students. I've included slides in this presentation that you can view on your own, and this is information that I will describe much more fully when we meet again next month. But I just want to introduce you to two core concepts of guided pathways that we have been working on for some time, again, that I'll describe in more detail in June. Meta majors is one, and the other is program mapping. Meta majors consolidate groups of similar majors and programs into categories that will make it easier for students to define their goals and select their major. After hours of work and discussion in our Meta Majors work team, and input from divisions, and discussion and recommendations from Academic Senate, and other guided pathways work teams, and Josh Ramirez Psych 200 students surveying local high school students, we created the following six exploration areas. We call them academic and career pathways, with the motto, "Explore your interests, discover your passion," which we are very proud of. The second important guided pathways piece that I want to briefly introduce you to today is sample program mapping, which takes Meta Majors one step further and shows students a sample plan for how to fulfill their goals in a specific amount of time. We are creating sample program maps for all our degrees and certificates that eventually will be online for students to look at in order to get a general idea of what that degree or program will entail. They include course sequences, program milestones, program learning outcomes, and they can look around and see what those are. We will go over program mapping, Meta Majors, and many other parts of our guided pathways work next month. But in looking at the chancellor's office visions for success goals, we believe strongly that guided pathways work will be the means by which we can help our students get on a path to reach their goals in a way that is efficient, accessible, and equity-driven. This concludes my overview, and I have a souvenir for everyone here today that you can use to show your support of our guided pathways work at SBCC and to help remind you of the point of our guided pathways, high-stakes task: identify and remove all forms of barriers to success, close equity gaps, and help all our students be successful in reaching their goals. identify and remove all forms of barriers to success, close equity gaps, and help all our students be successful in reaching their goals. Thank you all very much. See you at commencement.
Aren't you glad you stayed? You're gonna get a pencil.
While we're in transition, I just want you to know that I met with Margaret last week and received just a great education about guided pathways. And I was a beneficiary of her passion about this, as you are tonight. And I just can't believe all the work and the number of people who've been involved in this effort. So thank you, Margaret.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Benjamin, I just have a quick comment, and thank you, Margaret, but the... I have to ask this because the presentation started by saying that guided pathways was an anti-racism something initiative. And so that hasn't been anywhere in the literature. And so I just wanted to be clear for the public, because I know the public is following, you've heard a lot of speakers about this. I don't want to leave this meeting with some misconception. Dr. Benjamin, has this work, I've been following this very closely. This is the first that I've heard that this is, that guided pathways is anti-racism work. I have read a lot of the documents. I've watched the materials that our staff has gotten in conferences. Are we missing something here?
I'll let Margaret respond because she's involved, been involved at the state level. I have an opinion, but...
I did not coin that phrase. It came from institute number two, when Regina Stanbuck Stroud was giving a talk for everyone in attendance, and this was the phrase she used. And the theme of that particular institute was looking at this piece, and it's absolutely about equity. This whole piece is about closing equity gaps while increasing everyone else's success as well.
So the institutional race Simpson reference was in response, was that an opinion? Or was that because that is somehow embedded in the guided pathways work? Because I have not seen that anywhere on the website or in any of the literature. I just don't want headlines saying, "Santa Barbara City College has been awarded a grant for guided pathways to implement anti-racism training" because of the parallel work that our local school districts are doing.
I see. I think that's just a definition, perhaps, that...
I don't think that's in any of the language from the State Chancellor's Office.
Okay, good. I just want to make that clear because I wouldn't want to see that in tomorrow's newspapers.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
And it is mandated work to close equity gaps, achievement gaps.
Yeah, and it's great work, and we've been following it, and I think it's phenomenal for what we need here.
Absolutely.
And we had actually set today up to be able to give a larger Chancellor's Office framework, so you're getting the connecting piece at the end, if you will. So if you're thinking about the equity components of both AB 705 and guided pathways, you can see that these are efforts to actually achieve the vision for student success outlined by the Chancellor's Office, which does locate equity at the very center of all of this work and notes that race and ethnicity are key components in that equity work. So writ large guided pathways is both a philosophical and an operational approach to helping, if you go way back to the conversation about financial aid and the website, helping us think about not making students college-ready, which used to be our perspective all the time, but really making our college student ready. And so that requires us to do some pretty deep digging and some reformulating. So stepping back, about two years ago, the new chancellor, Eliot Oakley, established a set of strategic goals that he wanted to set both for his office and for the state as a whole. And then, over time, realized he was going to need a little more concerted effort on behalf of the colleges to be able to move forward those goals. So he worked via policy and legislation to say, "In order to do this work, you'll have to have stronger commitments." So in fall, and I'll let Dr. Reese kind of pick this up, the Chancellor's Office asked us to start working to align both our strategic goal work, our integrated planning work, and then our operational efforts to be able to start moving forward on closing equity gaps and achieving greater success and completion of awards for all of our students. So you can see that this is kind of a composite framework. We could actually add four or five other efforts into this conversation about mandates and initiatives, and we started first with these smaller pieces. So today, we're bringing to you our local effort to help achieve those goals, and this will be a first reading. And at our next meeting, we're hoping to bring this forward for your final approval. Dr. Rice, Reese is going to walk you through how we came up with our local goals and explain a lot of the methodology and the effort on behalf of a group of faculty and staff administrators who came together with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Austin, for the introduction. President, I almost went BB. It's not President BB anymore. President Benjamin, President Miller, esteemed members of the board, thank you for having me here today to share some of the work that our Institutional Effectiveness Committee and our guided pathways did in response to Chancellor Oakley's request that we look at our local plans and goals and start to bring those into alignment with the Vision for Student Success. So in today's presentation, I'm going to spend a little bit of time talking about the Vision for Student Success, the background about it, outline the goals that are within that, how we went about setting our own local goals to match up with those. And then I'm going to talk a little bit about kind of the efforts that the chancellor is doing to start to align a lot of their outcomes to help aid our strategic planning and bring all of their outcomes into a more integrated framework. And then we'll touch on real quick wrapping up with our integrated planning work coming up in the future here. So, I've got a clicker right here somewhere. So the Vision for Student Success, at the core of community colleges, is the belief and paramount value that higher education is for everyone. And the California Community College system has really embraced this ethos, providing open access, higher education to anyone who is interested in pursuing their education. We are some of the primary entry points for most college degree programs. We are the primary source for career technical education and workforce training. We're one of the primary sources for adult education, for people who are interested in pursuing advanced English, learning their English for the first language, as well as for lifelong learning. However, despite these successes, we still do face a number of challenges. Currently, the number of graduates that are coming out of the California community colleges are not predicted to meet California's workforce needs in the future. Additionally, a lot of our students, while completing their degrees, are completing their degrees with excess units. And it is important to remember, while some of these excess units may have been really fun and enjoyable and exploratory, and there was the space to do that, some of those other excess units were completed without the necessary need to do that. And that costs some of our students time away from work, often work that's supporting their families. So we need to take this in consideration as well as we start to look at our successes, as well as we are looking at strengthening support for older students and working adults. And then, really, we've seen serious and persistent equity gaps across both our California community colleges, as well as within our California community college demographic groups. So in response to this, Chancellor Oakley set up the Vision for Student Success in 2017 to have a more directed approach to achieve student and state outcomes. And since then, that's influenced the legislation, AB 705 being one of those, as well as some of the projects such as guided pathways. So the chancellor has asked us to really, that colleges have been tasked with achieving the system-wide Vision for Student Success goals by pursuing our mission. And our mission as a Santa Barbara City College is to provide students a diverse learning environment that inspires curiosity and discovery, promotes global responsibility, and fosters opportunity for all. They encourage us to work through achieving this by finding ways to reinforce our best practices, redesigning services, and reducing barriers to completion, such as the work that we're doing within guided pathways. So luckily, we're not alone with this, and the chancellor is providing some support with this. So he has been increasingly pushing the California Community College system to integrate its goals and the data that is necessary for assessing and pursuing how we have done on those goals. So these are some of the areas, as well as changing the way we do categorical funding to allow our colleges more flexibility in assessing their unique needs, as well as changing the general funding formula to focus us in more on those metrics that we need to see for California's success in the future. So to do this, they have, Chancellor Oakley has set up these goals within these areas to help focus our efforts as we do our own strategic planning. So focuses on increasing degrees, certificates, and the number of students who transfer to four-year universities. Focusing is on looking at how many units are students completing when they leave us with an associate's degree? And is that excess, and trying to bring that down to a more reasonable level that is appropriate for the student's degree program that they're leaving with? As well as trying to ensure that students leave here with the capability to get a living wage in the field that they studied with us. So to do this, he has provided these specific goals to move us along. So generally, increase awards by 20% by '21, '22. Increase transfer by 34%. Decrease the average units from 87% to 79%. Increase employment in the field of study from 69% to 76%. And reduce equity gaps by 40% by '20, '21, and '22, and by 100% by '26, '27. So in our work, as we sat down to start to set our own local goals to pursue what the Chancellor's Office has suggested and provided us guidance to help our strategic work and to meet California's needs, we set college-wide goals based on the Chancellor's Office's percentages that they provided. So we took the percentages we had in the base year, for most of these is 26, 17, and we looked at what would we need to do, how many students additionally would we need to graduate to see a 20% increase in students? And that's how we went about setting the goals for the college-wide goals. Now, when we get to the equity goals, where we're looking at disproportionate impact or equity gaps, and this is any place where we're seeing that one particular group is doing consistently lower than the average, overall average, for our students. Anywhere we see that, we're considering that as a disproportionate impact or an equity gap. And so for the equity gap ones, the first thing that we needed to do was determine how many students do we need to close that equity gap? Once we determined how many students we needed to close that equity gap, we then worked with that population and applied the corresponding percentage increase to meet the Chancellor's goals in '21, '22. So I'm not going to go through the specific goals that we've set. Those are provided in the report that has been provided to you. So I encourage you to look through those at your leisure and provide us feedback if you think those are reasonable. They are, especially the equity goals, they are aggressive. We will have a hard time meeting those, but the Chancellor's Office has encouraged us to set aggressive goals that we think we can do. So with this, the whole point of setting goals is to help guide our strategic planning. So I'm going to shift us a little bit into where the Chancellor's Office is helping to direct our strategic planning. So historically, we've had some issues with the Chancellor's Office providing us a whole lot of goals that really don't integrate in any particular way. So the Chancellor's Office has recently started to very aggressively bring those goals into alignment with each other. They're not there yet, and as you can see on this list, there's still a good bit of variety in there, but this has come significantly from where we were at a few years ago. So we're starting to see that there is a lot of commonality across these four areas that are helping to direct what we focus on in our day-to-day work. So you'll see transfer-level English and math in three of these. You'll see that reducing equity gaps pretty much blankets all of these. Every one of these asks us to reduce equity gaps in one way or another. You see transfer to four-level, 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 transfer to four-year universities appearing in three of these. Awards, and this is another place where you'll start to see kind of the difficulty that my office has as institutional research. The first one looks at just AS, ADDT, and then credit certificates, all secondly. Looking at the next one, we look at, well, then we look at certificates and AAs together, but ADTs are separate. So the Chancellor's Office is working to bring all of these things into alignment. So we see awards in all of them, but they're starting to pay attention to the detail that we need to when we're trying to figure out how we want to go with this. So we are entering into a really significant point of institutional and integrated planning at this point. So we have, we're setting new strategic directions for the college. We're revising the educational master plan that was developed in 2014. We're revising the student equity plan currently. We're finalizing the facility's master plan. And we're updating the distance education plan. So we have a lot of work to go for, but fortunately, the Chancellor's Office is starting to align goals to help us stratify and structure the goals as we move forward in our own integrated planning work. So with that, I would like to recognize the number of people who have helped work to do all this work of reviewing our plans, working and understanding the Chancellor's Office's various outcomes and goals. It has been a monumental effort by a lot of people, and we'd just like to recognize and thank them. And with that, do you guys have any questions?
Trustee Cronger.
Excuse me. Ms. Bird likes to attend our meetings. Thank you. Appreciate that presentation. I have two questions, which are in totally different categories.
Okay.
Or comments. The overall big picture that you just provided makes a lot of sense to me. It also feels, I read through the 57-page explanation in the Chancellor's Office, and I saw a lot of things that, some of which I don't feel like I know how we are addressing in that big picture. Things that they're saying, "Here's something to do," or this is, you know, I mean, for example, older and working students are often left behind. We need systematic ways to identify the needs of adult learners and connect them with the right services and on and off-campus. There's many other things that come up in this discussion that, student persistence, for example. That's key to moving students through to success, and something we've had trouble with in past evaluations. So to me, it's big picture. And then I get to the report and the recommended goals, and that, to me, is incredibly granular.
It is.
And small picture. Small in the sense of it's very detailed and specific as to certain people, and other people, I don't know why they're not there. It feels like a revision of the student equity plan, basically.
Yeah, and this is...
Rather than a need for a separate set of goals.
And this is one of the things that the Chancellor's Office has recognized, is the equity goals that we're setting in the Vision for Student Success should be in coordination with the student equity plan. It was on kind of their own time frame as they tried to digest all of what they'd bitten off, that they weren't able to get that one part in line. So in futures, we hope to see that the Vision for Student Success equity goals and the student equity plan become one thing at the Chancellor's Office.
Yeah, I mean, to me, that's where it belongs, and what we should be, our goals should describe the things that we are doing for meeting that vision for success, which include, obviously, AB 705, guided pathways, the student equity plan, the strategic plan, all those things you are listing, and other things that sometimes I haven't heard about as much. Another area would be in the reference that Margaret made to informed about the job market. That is an area where I feel like we really don't know much. I would love to have a presentation about what our various departments believe is that in-demand job market for their department, and what the pay level is, and how that is going to help us succeed with the student-centered funding formula.
Yeah, and that is one area that my office is starting to address.
But I don't see this in the report.
Right.
So to me, that report would have been something that pulled together all the different pieces that we are, A, already doing, or B, could do more with, and not be nearly as granular as this. This one, what we have here, to me, gets wrapped into student equity.
Yeah.
And when it gets wrapped into student equity, I would be asking, where are the veterans? Where are the foster kids? Where are the single parents? Where are our Muslim students? There are just so many categories of students that may or may not have a gap and are not even mentioned.
Yeah, so within...
And Hispanic students, which are...
Within here, within our, within the equity groups, we looked through and we identified where we did have disproportionate impact by the Chancellor's methodology, and those are the ones that appear in this report.
But we've looked at it before, and foster kids were front and center, for one.
Which, on which report?
Student Equity Plan, I believe. Foster kids were one of the student, one of the gaps.
So that was probably on a different outcome.
And yet, they're not listed.
Right.
Similarly, with single parents, I think, if you broke that out, we definitely have a gap.
Yeah, and so the Chancellor's Office isn't breaking out single parents in their demographic groups at this time. And in this particular report, it has prescribed what we are addressing.
Okay, well...
Can I just offer one way that this helped me when I was thinking through how the, so dumb, what the Chancellor's Office was really thinking with this work? I wouldn't have necessarily referred to these as goals if I were drafting a document like this. I would think about this as one set of metrics. So that larger document that you had the opportunity to read that seemed bigger and more expansive, these are really almost the numeric measures of an effort by the entire state of California to improve community college educational systems and outcomes. And so it tends to get a little too granular when you start to think about big visionary goals about change. It's really asking us, how far are we able to go? And so it's really pushing at that numerical edge of accomplishing those things, and... And so it's really pushing at that numerical edge of, of accomplishing those things, and there's both the overall numerical goals and then asking us to really make a commitment to those who are succeeding least in, in meeting that overall goal, and that's where the disproportionate impact comes in. But in order for us to do that work well, we really need to be upholding our commitment to foster youth, to veteran students, and all of that work is part of the work we're developing right now in our student equity plan that calls out our individual efforts to respond to those group needs. So over time, the state is trying to get to where some colleges have already been and seeing these things as kind of these integrated elements. And so this is a set of requirements that if we were shaping them, they'd look a lot different about how we'd like to report about ourselves. So there's a piece of this that's a little bit frustrating, but we're also kind of grateful that they're finally getting to a point, for a little while, they called this the simplified metrics, and then they realized that was, they were a little early in calling it the simplified metrics, because they have some work to do to get to that kind of elegant, seamless effort they're trying. They really want to have one clear set of data that we can use all the time as our dashboard for our success, and they're really trying to help get us there. So this is kind of a first-step effort in that work. So there are some spaces in here where we have control, and that'll be in the strategic directions that we work on as an institution, and there's some pieces in here that are asking us to be compliant. How are we reporting?
That we have to, this is the form we have to submit. This is completely the form.
Okay, but see, that, that escaped me. So- Because I don't see a form.
Right.
I don't see what the other choices were, you know, we picked two A or C, three C.
And we didn't choose, they chose.
They chose.
Okay, well, I don't know that either.
Yeah.
I think maybe what I need is more context.
Now that makes more sense.
Does that, does that help a little bit to have that different framework? So we're sorry about that.
Yeah.
So if we came in a little earlier, so we, we, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's sort of like-
Duly noted for next time.
Why are we there and not in a bigger picture? And why is that picture not in the student equity plan?
Well, and it is in the student equity plan.
Okay. Or different from the student equity plan, which has other people in it.
It's frustrating because they have so many different initiatives right now, and he was showing in the listing of those four, the, how they're, it's, it's, it's more complicated than it needs to be. They're trying to streamline it, it seems.
Yes.
And hopefully, in the next few years. But the other piece is that I think the reason they're doing this is they're going to hold us accountable, and our funding is going to be attached to this, as you will see when we start talking to you about the budget.
Right, and, and, and these numbers are somehow divorced from all of that picture of how we're going to get there.
Right, so tonight is like step one. We're just trying to give you one foot, one toe in the water. And there will be one foot by June, I hope.
So we're thinking today was three toes.
Three toes, okay, okay.
Well, let me, let me ask my-
But you can see how complicated it is for us. You see, you've seen three different huge initiatives tonight, yes.
So, okay, let me ask the totally different question, and this is methodology, the last paragraph that you have here. You said, "In setting our equity goals, a similar method was used." That was the, "Start with the base and increase by twenty percent. A similar method was used, but an additional step is required. First, it's determined how many additional students of the equity group were needed to remove the equity gap. For example, in Goal 1C, black or African-American students were completing at a rate of three percent compared to the overall rate, completion rate of six percent." I'm not asking where those numbers come from, but I'm still going forward. "In twenty sixteen, seventeen, if an additional thirty black or African-American students attained this outcome, the group's completion rate would be the same as the overall completion rate." I'm assuming you're saying if these additional thirty students completed, there would be no gap.
Yes.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. "After computing the percentage change needed to remove the equity gap, the desired twenty percent increase in overall completion rates was applied." All right, what that seems to say to me, and correct me, because I don't think that's where you were going, the goal from the chancellor's office, the Vision for Success, was take five years, from sixteen, seventeen, to what, twenty-one, twenty-two?
Twenty-one, twenty-two.
To increase by forty percent.
Right.
Then goal, in ten years, there will be no gap.
Yes.
But mathematically, what you're describing, as I'm understanding it, is-
You're understanding correctly.
We took up, we, we retroactively said no gap, which is totally different.
Yeah, we looked at what would be the number that we would need to close that equity gap.
But why are we closing the equity gap in two years ago, mathematically?
Right. Why, why highlight, why bring that forward?
When the goal is forty percent.
Right.
In five years.
So the Institutional Effectiveness Committee and the Guided Pathways Data and Goal Groups both felt that it was important to understand what we, what the work is we actually have ahead of us. So how many students do we need to actually close that gap? Not how many students do we need to close half that gap, but what are we looking at to really close that gap?
I don't have a problem with knowing what the students are. I'm having a problem with deciding to close the gap in sixteen, seventeen, rather than in ten years, like the goal is.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I could see laying it all out and saying, you know, from here to the first five years, you would need this many students to get to forty percent, and then in ten years, you would need to do this many students. But to, to do it in a way that says our goal is immediately no gap, aren't we setting ourselves up for failure?
We're setting us up for a difficult, yeah, it's going to be difficult. I mean, if we feel really strongly about that, we can go back to the forty percent.
Well, I'm just confused why we would want to do it that way.
That was the feeling of the committee, was that we wanted to see those numbers, and we wanted to present those numbers.
Happy to see the numbers, not so sure I'm happy to say we're already there.
Well, no, but, you know, it's a stretch goal, and they encouraged us to set aspirational goals that we thought would be difficult and would motivate us to start to really address these gaps.
And we didn't have the benefit of the discussion, which I am sure was very lengthy.
Yes.
I, I can't imagine the discussion.
At Santa Barbara? No. So what are you asking us? So you, this is, the board president and superintendent have to sign this off, and it's going to go off to some, somewhere.
To Sacramento, we have to submit it.
Okay, so you need us to approve the locally-aligned subgoals, because-
Not tonight.
But like at some point.
Eventually, at the next meeting.
Okay, and because the chancellor's goals are the chancellor's goals, and they are fine. I, you know, I, we don't get in the weeds and tell the college how to do things. If this is what you need to do, and, you know, what do we know what you're going to do? My, what, what I will only say is that I am very concerned about protecting this institution from undue influence, and I have to remind this board that I still strongly feel that there are lots of special interests, politically motivated things, that are finding their ways in our educational documents, K-16, that is not unique to Santa Barbara City College. I feel strongly about this because I'm raising two children in the Santa Barbara Unified School District, and I have seen what some of these equity methods have done, and they have not been good for the community, for children, or for families. And so I am very concerned that Santa Barbara City College would go and choose one method as the end-all to address equity gaps, knowing that there are a variety of different things that we can do. I think that, I'm, I'm concerned.
So we're not choosing one method to-
No, I know that, and that's not my job to tell you guys. Like, honestly, the college does what they do. We'd say, "Go, Dr. Benjamin, do this," and you will do it. What I am saying is that I, when I heard, oh, this is an anti-racism document, it's like, wait, wait, when did this come up? And so I just want to make sure that my position remains the same, that I am here to protect institution from undue influence, to protect that mission, to protect the diverse populations we have in the city, our most at-risk youth, that by looking at metrics from our local school district are absolutely unacceptable for a community like Santa Barbara. And looking at the work that has been happening in our neighboring district for the last ten years, a district in which I have raised children in, in which I have worked in for more than a decade, seeing the community that I serve and that I live with, students of color, underrepresented students, socially connected Spanish students, it is unacceptable, the methods that have been chosen to close some of these equity gaps, and in fact, some of our equity gaps are just getting wider. And I don't, I don't know that you guys are going in that direction, I honestly have no say in that.
Can you give us an example of a method?
The anti-racism training.
Of the training, oh.
Yes, like that is, that has been the end-all for our neighboring district, and I can say that as a parent. I'm not speaking as an employee of the district, I'm speaking as a parent. And I can say that that has not been beneficial to preparing our students to succeed in math, in English, in college-level courses, at the expense of families having to then supplement the needed skills and instruction, or whatever they may need, because our neighboring district chose to do something that, I'm not saying is bad or good, it's just they put all their focus in one area to close equity gaps. I'm sure they did their gap analysis.
I don't think the college is going to do that.
Okay, and I just want to make sure that publicly-
Using a variety of methods, there are lots of things that have to change. I just, if we just look at one C, is that, the very first one has to do with increasing the number of students.
Yeah.
Who receive the variety of degrees. So overall, you see those numbers, and the three groups they've listed are the three groups that are receiving the least number of these degrees. Is that not correct?
Yes.
And so sixteen, seventeen was chosen as baseline for whatever the reasons are. I mean, first, do you agree that we need to close the equity gaps and these variety of students that we have? All these students need to be on the same level.
Right.
And have the same opportunity.
Right.
And be able to, well, to be at the same level.
Right.
And so it shows the numbers in sixteen, seventeen, and then it shows the number that we need to increase the gap. I mean, do you believe in this philosophically?
Yes.
That we need to do it? And so then, the how comes in.
Right.
How we're going to do it. It may require some training of our teachers. We may need to change the curriculum. It's just a variety of, we need to expose the students to different kinds of opportunities, to different learning styles, to different kinds of materials. All, many different methods will be used to ensure that we reach this target, and it's a stretch goal. We made a, a number look small, like LGBT, you go from twenty-eight to fifty-six, and that difference is the number you have to increase, but it doesn't seem like many. And then it's based on how these students identify themselves, and there may be more students in these categories, but we don't, we don't know, because so many students choose not to identify themselves in these ways.
Yeah.
But that's the goal.
Yes, and I believe that that's the goal, and I just want to make sure that we publicly state that that is what our intention is here, because unfortunately, the political climate that we are, parents and families are living in here in Santa Barbara, is very stressful.
I see.
And it's very stressful when you are hearing young children, just having the peer relationship that they're not having, and unfortunately, a lot of these things are being caused by the climate we're in, by the adults, and, and that is just my gut sitting here that I have to say that, because I love this institution, and my family and I are so committed to this school, that this school, we serve everyone, and I do not want to see us going down a route where we are now, I don't know, just, we, we've forgotten what our mission is.
I just don't think we can please every single person. I mean, we have to do, as professionals, what we think are the right things to do, knowing that there will be people who are not satisfied with that.
Well, I'm not concerned with people not satisfied. Unfortunately, the people that aren't satisfied were choosing elsewhere. That's the problem, is-
Well, they're going to run into this everywhere they go.
Well, no, in terms of, I guess, choosing elsewhere, that they will find other ways to go private, to fund what they need to fund.
Yes.
And I've heard that from families that I would have never expected, that are now out of pocket, would be in the service for private college counselors, for private tutoring, for private, and it is out of the desperation of, because of our, we're not providing to students. We have stopped focusing on teaching and learning. This institution has always been focused on teaching and learning, that has always been the top priority here, and I just want to make sure that we continue to make that a focus.
Okay.
Just wanted to commend you on an excellent presentation report. I love everything in it. Thank you.
Trustee Nelson.
Thank you. I think that people in general get stressed when they face change, and they get worried. And when they, when that happens, then they tend to, we all tend to be that, do that. And then we tend to maybe misunderstand or skew something that's going on, and then there's things that, there are mistakes that get made along the way, and there's a lot of mistakes, because we all make them, because we're all human. My children are both teachers, and they make their living in classrooms, and they see changes, and the first thing they think of is, oh, no, they're going to do this, and they get scared. And I, I kind of like watching their reaction. And then when they figure that out, and then the next wave of change is, then, you know, five years later, there's another wave of change, and then they get stressed all over again. My son finally figured out the game, and he doesn't seem to get stressed. I don't think my daughter has, and she's older. But really, we read the local newspapers, and my neighbors, they know what I do, they know I sit on this board, and they come and they talk to me, and they tell me, they discuss what they read in the papers. And I'm active in other, in nonprofit groups and whatnot around town, and people come up, come up and say things to me. Some of them live in my district, some of them don't. But I'm available, so they talk to me. A lot of concern over the issue that Veronica brought up with the, with the anti-racism stuff going on and those lawsuits. And then I know some people that really got upset about the attempt to shut down gate classes, in the, which is advanced, you know what that is. So, and the school district backed off on that. That, to me, just says, you know, if someone within the district actually, actually came out and said, well, it was like an attempt to sort of, you know, even things out, in other words, close the equity gap by dumbing things down, not the way to go. So the, the people didn't like that. Maybe it is the way to go, I'm not the expert, but I don't think it's the way to go. So I don't have to take sides, because personally, but I got to watch this stuff, because I'm sitting on this board. And it's not my job to do your job, to figure out how to do things, or which things to use, which methods. If you're not really sure, do it three or four different ways, till you figure out which one works best. But don't give up on something just because, you know, you're, everybody seems to be doing this other thing, but the other thing ain't working. Why would you do that? So I think you're all smarter than that. So, so the problem, so the problem goes from that to communicating with the public and communicating with this board, and telling us what you're looking at, and realizing that we should probably know what, what's in the papers, and if you don't, you know, and you don't want to read them, fine, but then you're going to get these questions from us.
Right.
That are eating up time. So it, it's just about communications. Tell us what you're faced with. Is it doable? You're thinking it might not be. We need to know, because when we get asked by the public, and it used to be, we could just say, oh, the college is great, everything's fine, we're doing good, yeah, we got a handle on this, but lately, if I say that, it's a lie, and I won't do that. So, or I don't know, and I hate saying, I don't know. So what, I'm not going to come to you two about that, I'm going to go to Dr. Benjamin and say, why don't I have answers for these questions? And so just communicate so that we can communicate effectively, and then we, we won't be asking a lot of these detailed things. We'll just say, "Good job, Dr. Benjamin," and that's it.
We're trying.
I know.
We're trying, but a lot of it's being forced on us, so we, we have to respond to it.
Yeah.
And we're trying to respond to it in the best ways that we can, so that people don't become upset, and that we hope they understand. When they don't, we don't have much control over how people feel.
Yeah, I, I, it bothers me that, I can understand it, but it still bothers me that we, we had these-
It bothers me too.
We, we did this testing, you know, to get people, we did the interesting, we put them in the, in the, what do you call it? I can't use the term, I'm buried in my head from eons ago when I was here. So we had, we can't do those classes anymore. So-
Basic skills.
Basic skills classes, you know, they're supposed to already have that when they get here. If they don't, they have to take those. So, and they don't really get credit towards anything by taking them.
Right.
And it slows down everything. Well, we've been trying and offering better and better of those classes over and over again, and it doesn't get better. It's not fixing it. So somebody across the country from us goes, hey, let's try this. And they did. First year, there was no difference. Second year, they start improvements, they kept getting better. Now California, not, not first, not second, probably not third, jumps on the bandwagon statewide all at once. Here we go. We're gonna do this. And I'm all for it, but there's so much resistance to that change. And if these people that are resisting would just stop and look, look, this works, we can, it'll work, because it's proven to work. But it won't work if you don't implement it, and don't get behind it, and don't figure it out. I was pretty pleased with the presentation so far about the effort going into the changes that we need to make. Because all these changes are, are related, but yet they're coming from different directions at the same time? Why is that? Could it be that there might be some dissatisfaction out there about the results we've been getting, and that people, people are praying that we can do better? And maybe we can, but only if we try. And so I don't want to end what I'm saying here with a negative. I just want to say thank you for your hard work. Don't give up. And help us to talk to the public, so that we have answers, so that we can communicate, so that we can protect and nourish the education, the reputation of this institution. Thank you.
Trustee Parker.
Thank you. Just super briefly, I also want to say thank you for the reports. I really appreciate your attempt to structure it so that, because my first question was when I was reading this was, okay, what are the first next steps? And trying to follow that with eight point two. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And I also appreciate that a lot of this is, you know, I think it's fantastic that the chancellor's office, that they are trying to bring this community system-wide, these goals system-wide. And so I think it's a very important step, but clearly it's gonna be a bit messy as it gets going. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Croninger.
So I think, following up on what Craig said, and what Veronica said, and Kate as well, and returning to context. I think we need something that explains more about what the context is. If there's a form, why, we didn't have choices, and what the form is gonna make us say, and also what, how we plan to accomplish these things, by reference at least to the big picture that we heard about today, and we know about as well. See, when I look at one C at the top there, the, there is an overall goal of going from nineteen hundred and fifty-three students succeeding to twenty-three hundred and forty-four in five years. And then there are the sub-goals for Black or African-American first generation and LGBT. If you take the numbers that those three subs increase as our goal, you've only got thirty-four students left for the overall. Are we, are we just happy with that? No, I don't think so. I think what we are saying is, we are doing all of these things for all of our students. But that's not clear in the explanation we're getting here, and therefore it's not clear to the public.
And that's the reason you get two reads. So we have all this feedback, and when you get your second read, it is our hope that it will be clearer.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
If I can't grasp it all, then I can't relate-
Absolutely. So you've given us really, really good feedback, and we will bring you an enhanced version at the next meeting.
Yeah, I hope it's not too many hundreds of pages.
Well, see? Insatiable, you're insatiable, you're insatiable.
Be careful what you have, before you might just get it.
I'll, I'll text it to him, be at PDF, and email it and drop it off.
Dr. Haslam.
I'll, I'll be brief. My, I, I, I support, I support this effort with all my heart. I think to, to do so is to begin by understanding the, the problem for which this represents a solution. My concern is, sometimes when we make these radical changes, and there are, I think, I think, Craig, you're right, there, we, we do resist change. We're human beings. And, and maybe we resist change for a variety of reasons, one of which is that we may create a new problem that we hadn't anticipated. For example, when the goal is set, to, to reduce the number of units from, I think the number was eighty-seven to seventy-nine, I mean, that's a laudable goal, because students do take too much time, and that costs the state money, it costs the student access to a job. So I understand that. On the other hand, those extra units were also used to explore, and at this stage of their life, exploration is, is critical. So if, if, if that's an unwanted consequence, and I think it is, then how do we resolve that? And that takes constant feedback in the process to, to know, okay, we've tried this, what, let's evaluate, let's figure out, what did, how did it work? Did we miss something? And that would be one of the things that I would be concerned about.
Could I just went, put one thing in there, Dr. Haslam? I think that's a really great point. So a piece of this is accountability to the institution. So we're, we're thinking about reducing extra units for students during their course and path. Intentional exploration is something that we laud, right? The idea of general education and finding a wide field of knowledge is crucial to all of our students. When students wind up having additional units because we have lacked clarity, because we created a couple of barriers, because we made a system kind of bungling and strange, that's on us. And the framework, and we'll keep working to refine this to help you kind of see the context of this, is the chancellor's office is asking us to see each and every individual student. So seeing those percentages as headcount, which we don't often do here, is actually, it's dramatic, and that's why we feel a strong sense when we see those. Because we need to be thinking about those forty-three students who, if we had clarified the financial aid website two years ago, might well have been on their way a lot faster because they wouldn't have had to work forty-five hours. So this is about, goals really for us to be thinking about how we're approaching our operations, and the ways in which we're building the community that helps most students through. So that guided pathways approach is really about taking a look at all of those component parts, and holding up here a set of goals that say, you really need to reach a lot further and a lot higher if you're gonna help the chancellor's office move this forward, if we're gonna help our community move this forward. And, and really thinking about those pieces in an equity frame helps us do that.
Yeah, that makes perfect sense.
Thank you. I, I appreciate that summary you just gave us. I, I, I think this is great work. I, I really, I really support it. And it, it, it's a metric. And I guess I've al, I always liked numbers, and the metric, and we may never meet it. We never may, we may never get there, but, but we're putting into numbers what we've often just said in words. And, you know, is AB seven oh five gonna do it for us? Is guided pathways gonna do it for us? Maybe not.
Together, they might.
Together, they might. And maybe there's a, maybe there's something else, maybe there's another program, we don't even know right now. So I think it, I think it forces us to, to look at all these programs in terms of, is that gonna, do we think that's gonna help us with the metric? So I, I, I support the, the, the ideas.
Well, we were really glad to get to share kind of the beginning of the breadth of this work with you today, so thank you very much.
That's just beginning.
Beginning. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Let me just say, I don't think we're, at least I'm going to suggest that we probably won't cover the capital, five-year capital program tonight. We don't need to make a decision tonight. But I would ask everybody to carefully review what's been prepared for tonight.
And I have received some comments from a couple of board members, so if you have reactions to it, if you've read it and you have questions, just feel free to send me.
Yeah, but we got two of the items.
But, 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 but before we, yeah, we do. I, I just want to say that we, we, we do have a couple public speaker slips on that topic, and people who've stayed here. So before we leave, I'm gonna ask for those two speakers if they want to make their comments tonight, rather than wait till the next time.
On ten one?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, being you prefer to do it tonight. But hold on a second, we got, we got, we're not quite there yet, so, just a few more minutes. We, the next, the next item on the, the agenda is-
President Miller, just because these members of the public know that we are actually not gonna cover that meeting, could I ask that we, to, out of respect for their time, go ahead and jump forward, just a public comment on ten point one?
Well, we could do that. It's just a matter of five or ten minutes, but I was trying to stay on the schedule.
So we're gonna skip nine point two and nine point three?
We've also been criticized for not sticking with the, the actual schedule, but we can do that now.
I think that's a good idea.
Okay, let's go ahead with it.
Go.
And the two speakers are Cornelia and Gregory, correct?
Thank you so much, honorable members of the Board of Trustees, President Miller, Dr. Benjamin. I will try to cut my five minutes in half. I'm talking about the five-year facilities plan, that gives me half a minute per year, right? So, but actually, I totally wished I could talk more about this. And not just talk to you, but talk with you. And I wished we would include more people into this discussion. I tell you, this is one of these days when I wished the good old board subcommittees would come back. I know, I know, most of you have heard me say that before. And while the fiscal committee for sure has been my all-time favorite, you know that too, for sure, the facilities committee was following right behind. We would be sitting around a table, and we could have a real discussion, an exchange of information, thoughts, and opinions, and ideas. Guess what? No cameras either. I tell you, that makes a big difference, and not only if you have a bad hair day. Yep, good old times they were, I feel. But back on the topic, to the topic at hand. The plan you have in front of you includes major commitments of our future financial resources. And the emphasis is on future. And we all know, the future is uncertain. Our future enrollments are uncertain. And unfortunately, our chancellor's office, together with the governor, has been acting somewhat erratic, capricious recently, which adds even more uncertainty to the whole ballgame. Funding formula changes, scoring algorithms, deficit factors, priority lists, it feels as if we have a change almost every day. Don't get me wrong, I am not here to dispute that any of the buildings which are included in this plan are in urgent need of restoration or replacement. And I'm sure the cost estimates are as accurate as can be. With Lindsay Mas and her team, the college is lucky to have experts in the field. The reason I am here today is to make sure that in our discussion about committing to spend large amounts of money on buildings, we do not lose sight of everything else we have commitments and responsibilities for. First and foremost, our students, followed by the people who work here, our employees. General fund reserves are intended to be used to give us security and stability during tough times, and those might lie ahead of us. So what, so that we can continue to offer classes and services to our students, that we can continue to pay benefits and comparable salaries to our employees. The old saying holds true, that we can spend every dollar only once. Let's keep this in mind in this discussion. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Koss.
Thank you very much. I'll just, again, make this, try to be as quick as I can. Regarding the capital outlay plan, again, I understand you need to go through this process and need to submit it and all that. But I do want to remind you as a reality check, that SBCC is still projecting structural operating deficits as far as you can see. Double-digit annual pension cost increases are projected, that you can count on. Approximately eight million in operating reserves will be consumed with the, to balance the operating deficit in the current planning. Ten million dollar capital projects set aside cannot be used for operating, to my knowledge. And historical FTCES enrollments have been declining since two thousand and fourteen, fifteen, and again, we heard some analysis on that today by another public member. And the board reserve minimums will hit approximately twenty-one point nine million in twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. And again, as the prior speaker just mentioned, as a reminder, the Board Policy six three oh five Reserve states that a reserve fund is an established prudent fiscal management tool which buffers cash flow fluctuations, again, you can count on that, and reasonably for reasonably unforeseen operational needs. So I think it's very troubling that all these years, the can's been kicked down the road in terms of using the reserves as part of a normal course of funding operations. The potential impact of any large capital plan is not prudent, given the operating expenditures of a hundred and two to a hundred and six million a year, structural operating deficits, and the additional operating fit-out and costs of major capital improvements, if they are undertaken, come out of the operating budget, just making a bad situation even worse. So again, I've said this before, I really think that what should be happening before, I mean, I know you have to submit the, you know, projected plans, but I really think it's the fiduciary obligation of the superintendent, even the interim superintendent, that may be ideal, and Board of Trustees, to conduct a fiscal modeling exercise, to see what adjustments would potentially be needed to bring the twenty nineteen, twenty operating budget into balance, before any serious consideration is given to major capital outways, outlays. You really need to know how to balance the budget, take into account all the uncertainty. I'm not saying implement it, but I think you need a prioritized, well-thought-out plan, and not just keep kicking the can down the road. Thank you.
Thank you. So I think our last item on the agenda is-
We got two more.
Two more? What am I missing?
Nine point two and nine point three.
Okay. Well, I was thinking we'd already covered that, but the, nine, nine two is update on the superintendent president's search. Do we have any additional comments on that?
Yes, we do, which is, we had a request from our non-credit faculty that they have a representative on the screening committee, is what we had called it. And we discussed that in committee, and the committee felt that that would be fine. We do have, I think, sixteen now, but the difference between one more was not an issue from our point of view.
Makes sense to me.
So in, if the board is comfortable in a consensus sense, I think, then that enables our superintendent president to ask that group to pick someone.
Without objection, I think we should move ahead.
Thank you.
Any other comments about the search process? Trustee Nielsen.
Yeah, sorry, I'm getting a little tired. The, where are we at in this, this search thing? So we need, you've already, we, we voted, so you're gonna, you're gonna get hold of act.
Yes.
We haven't already?
Yes, I haven't.
Maybe she went and turned into YouTube, and watched the meeting. She, what she could have done. I would have. I was a salesman, I made tons of those presentations. I wouldn't want to wait. So, and she probably knew she won because she could see us.
I'll let them know when the meeting is over.
Okay. I, I'm concerned about the search committee. Like, you got that many people on it? Because that's a lot.
It's typical.
That, we've always had the sixteen.
The sixteen.
Yeah, so this is adding one more person from a group that is in fact not representative.
And how many of the board members, and who are the board members that are on it?
We've never had a board member on the screening, it's a screening committee is what it has been, and, and I certainly heard the recommendation-
To have two board members.
To have board members, but we've never done that in our past two searches, so it becomes an issue for discussion.
That was kind of my question.
Yeah, you have to discuss it, to decide whether you want to do it that way. But you already know, that's her recommendation.
Yeah.
So now we have the search committee.
Do we have a, do we have comment? I mean, I, I heard that clearly from her as well, that, you know, that she thinks it's a good idea to have a couple, I don't know if two's the right number, but to have a couple board members on the, we call it the scre, she called it the-
Screening committee.
-search committee, we call it the screening committee. I think there's a lot of merit in doing that. Maybe, but I guess I'd like to hear comment from other trustees. Trustee Parker.
I had assumed, since this is my first search here, I had assumed that the two people that we had said, that you had appointed to the, and, and subcommittee working on this-
The ad hoc, please use ad hoc.
The ad hoc, the ad hoc subcommittee on this, that, that you two would-
There's three.
Actually, it's three.
It's three.
So, no.
And maybe that's too many.
I don't think that, I'm sorry to interrupt, I think, I think that subcommittee was formed to, to do the search for the-
Just do this piece.
Well, to get the search thing going.
Yeah.
So now, if we want to do this to get, that committee's done with, it was an ad hoc committee, it's over with. It doesn't exist. So now we start from scratch. committee. It's over with. It doesn't exist. So, now we start from scratch. And so, and I can understand, I would assume, but I don't think assuming is a good thing to do at this point. No criticism intended.
I'm not wild about the idea of having a board member on the committee, simply because there tends to be, there's at least a risk that they would have more influence than any other member. And we get to make the final decision. We make, we determine the parameters. We say, we want a minimum of three, or four, or five candidates, but we try not to, this is how it's worked in the past, influence unduly by having one or two members of the board on the committee.
Yeah.
Trustee Croninger.
I'm not disagreeing at all. I'm just thinking procedurally, we didn't notice much of a discussion. And maybe what we want to do is have our newly hired consultant identify some issues that she sees and bring them to us for a discussion at our next meeting. We're going to have to say something about the committee anyway, I think.
Yes, I'm sure, I'm hoping she'll want to get started right away with the discussion with me.
I agree with you, Peter. I like, I think I went home and I explained it to someone. Oh, I said, my husband, I don't even know. Like, when I got home late one night, and I said, I think it's really good because then whoever they bring to us, everybody's okay with it, and then it's just up to us. But like, the classified appointee wouldn't have a double say because they were in the circle and then at the table here. And I think that was the point that was hit home last time, in which I thought, wow, that's really good, because then everybody is okay with whoever comes up, because the understanding is, whichever the 5, 3, 2, whatever, everyone's going to be happy because they all agreed. So, I concur with Peter, just leave it as it is and not have trustees in that process.
I think the thinking behind it, when you oppose having trustees on that initial committee, is that those trustees get two bites of the apple. Now, I'll take this opportunity to introduce our interim Vice President for Human Resources.
Who so graciously be helping us.
He's been sitting there.
And she might, I know she's done a huge number of searches, and is it okay?
Yes, sure, absolutely. Welcome.
Good evening, trustees. Marcy Wade, interim Vice President of Human Resources. It's a good question whether there should be involvement of the board members on search committees. It works depending on circumstances. There's pluses and minuses to having them on board and not having them on board. From my past experience, I was involved as the committee chair for the superintendent president's search at Santa Monica College when they were last recruiting for a superintendent president. There were 20 members on the committee, represented by all of the employee groups, and we had community representatives included. How that happened is that the board members made recommendations for community members and pretty much decided they were going to be the representatives for the specific areas. 20 people on a committee is huge, but it was a successful recruitment. And I believe with the number of applications that we had, and we did use a search agency to assist in this. And as the chair, I worked very closely with that person. It was a successful outcome. We had good representation. We had a multitude of candidates. And we had a process pretty much that was determined by the board, how they wanted it. As the representative that you have selected had indicated, there was quite a bit of work with the board in terms of designing how that search was going to take place. But it is possible to do. I have not been involved in a search with a superintendent president where there were board members on the search committee. So, that's something you will have to decide what will be best, given what your circumstances are.
Thank you. Questions?
Could we say welcome, and we promise not to keep you till 8 o'clock in future meetings?
Thank you, but that's not an issue. I hate to tell you this, but I'm used to board meetings lasting a lot longer.
We're Nana.
This is Santa Barbara.
I know. I feel very blessed.
Neil, do you have a question?
Thank you, and welcome. Thank you.
I have a quick question. I'm sorry. You said that there were certain benefits of having board members on there. I don't have a good understanding of what those benefits are. It just hasn't been explained to me. What would you say would be the benefits if board members were on it?
I think it's complex if board members, it complicates things when board members are involved. Everything is, there's a number of confidentiality issues, and this is something that the board will have to decide and can discuss during a next session. An advantage would be that you have that person that is involved in the details of what is going on in the committee. But I don't know how you would feel with that, those individuals participating, continuing to be involved. I mean, as a board member, the responsibility of selecting the next superintendent president is yours collectively. And there might be the concern of an advantage point if having board members on your selection committee is part of the pattern.
Thank you.
Okay.
I think I hear, what I hear you suggesting is that having a board member on the committee may unintentionally take away the authenticity of the search committee as something separate from the board. So, I think that is a concern. If that, I don't know if that's what you were saying exactly, but I can see that having board members on the committee would, takes away a little of their authority, just by their presence, could.
It could be a, it could be an unintended intimidation factor. And the whole point of having a committee is that you work collectively together. You feel free to state what your concerns and comments are, that you are honest. First of all, everybody needs to be trained so that they understand the procedures to keep you free from conflict. But everyone needs to understand that they should be trained in their role. The confidentiality issues that were discussed by the consultant are very real. These are highly competitive positions, and there are serious political factors when someone is making a decision whether to apply for a position. And it can be intimidating, especially in light of the responsibilities between the superintendent president and the Board of Trustees.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, I guess we move on to item 9.3, state legislation.
Thank you.
Cool. So, for these, I think they're pretty straightforward. I mean, we've already submitted support for one of them. You said Dr. Beebe's letter. And the other two, I think, I mean, AB 30, that's enrollment. And so, we got to keep that one going. And the CalFresh, I think, is just solving food security on our campus. So, I think these are no brainers, and the league supports them. So, I think we should too.
And just to highlight that, the one that talks about allowing units, that was something that was of interest to us. We were trying to find ways to get local students to have priority. Well, by default, because our local students enroll into enrollment, they will come in with the units that will allow them to have priority registration. And so, it's a win-win for our local students.
So, are you moving?
It's noticed for discussion and reports information, but...
She sent it off.
Reach consensus, we can just...
Yeah, consensus.
Send the letters.
Yeah, I agree.
Any objection? Concerns?
No objection. Send the letter.
I hear a consensus, we should send a letter.
Hey, we all agreed on something. Exhaustion has been reached.
I think that's the...
Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
President Miller, I realize that I didn't get a chance to do this earlier in the meeting, and I just wanted to clarify something that was said, attributing quotes to me that I felt were not true or were false. And so, I just want to say that the quotes are totally false, out of character, and not how I speak and use language. I did have a conversation with those folks, and I'll issue a public statement another time clarifying what I said and what I believe. But the quotes that were said in public comment, I'd never said those things ever in my life.
Thank you for that clarification. Trustee Abut. Anything else anybody wants to bring up before we get to a motion to adjourn?
We need a second, though. Second? Thank you.
Third.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I just have to say something about the length of the meeting. We had scheduled these interviews for Monday, and they just could not take place. So, we would have been getting out at 6:20.
I had a big lunch, Dr. Benjamin. Thank you.
But we received an extra trip in.
We didn't blame you.
Exactly.
I drove one.